Good morning. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting the Placer County Board of Supervisors to order for Tuesday, May 5th. We begin this morning with a flag salute that will be led by our county council Jerry Carden. If you please join us in standing for the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our clerk will read our statement of meeting procedures, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of May 5th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you very much. We will go ahead and take up for consideration by the board the consent agenda, any items on consent that any board member wished to have removed for discussion. Seeing none, any member of the public wish to have an item that is currently listed on consent removed for discussion? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Holmes, second Montgomery, on consent. Roll call, please.
Holmes.
Aye.
Duran.
Yes.
Wiegand.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Euler.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is a time for public comment when any member of the board can, or any member of the public, excuse me, can address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If you wish to address the board under public comment, please step forward and let us know who you are and where you reside, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. Anybody want to address the board on public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to supervisor committee reports. Anything that anybody wants to report out, any doings since our meeting just last Tuesday that need public notification? And seeing no committee reports. Before we get into department items, we have some closed session items county council would like to chat with us about, so I'm going to have Jerry go ahead and tell us what those closed session items are. The board will then adjourn to closed session when we conclude our business, assuming it is before 9:10. We will come back to take up regular agenda items. If it is not before 9:10, we will be back here at 9:10 in order to take up our first timed item.
The board is adjourned to closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss the two matters of existing litigation listed on page four, item eight of the agenda, and also for a conference with its labor negotiators regarding the DSA labor negotiations.
Thank you very much. All right, we're heading into closed session. We'll see you folks in just a few.
Few more here than the word eight thirty. All right, good morning. We're going to go ahead and call the May 5th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors back to order. County Council has a report out on our closed session, so we'll go ahead and take that now.
The board met in closed session and with, for a conference with legal counsel in two matters of existing litigation. In KNS Construction versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. In Maldonado versus Bryan Harris and County of Placer, the board authorized the defense of the deputy sheriff and waived the conflict to allow the county council's office to represent the deputy sheriff and the county. The board also had a conference with its labor negotiators regarding the DSA negotiations and heard a report from their labor negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.
Okay, so I was informed after coming out of closed session that there were some folks that didn't realize our board started this morning at eight thirty. Typically, public comment is one of the first items that we take up. And the, the public comment, open mic portion is for those items that are not on the agenda. So what we are going to do is take our first timed item and then as time allows in between our timed items, for anybody that didn't realize our board started this morning at eight thirty and therefore missed the public comment portion, I will allow for additional public comment in between our timed items as time allows. Those of you that are here for an agendized item, you will have the opportunity to present your comments, your thoughts when we get to that agendized item. Everybody good with that? All right, good. We'll go ahead and move on with our nine ten timed item. This is Adult System of Care Mental Health Awareness Month. Board is being asked to approve a proclamation to promote mental health awareness by proclaiming May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Placer County. And I believe, is Maureen going to present this? Oh, okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and introduce the item, then Supervisor Holmes, I believe, has a, has the proclamation.
Okay. Good morning, Marie Osborn with the Adult System of Care. The, on behalf of the Adult System of Care and Children's System of Care, I'd like to request that the board proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Okay.
Very happy to do that and honored. So I have a proclamation I want to read, May 5th, 2015, in the matter of a proclamation recognizing May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Placer County. Whereas good physical health and good mental health are both equally essential to a person's overall well-being. And like any physical ailment, mental health conditions may require urgent and sensitive care. Whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, with the National Institute of Mental Health reporting that one in every four adults and one in every five older adults experience a mental health disorder in a given year. And in one, and one in seventeen Americans live with a serious mental illness. And whereas the U.S. Surgeon General reports that one in ten individuals under the age of eighteen suffer from serious emotional and mental health conditions that cause significant impairment in their day-to-day lives at home, in school, and with their peers. And whereas the World Health Organization reports that four of the ten causes for disability in the United States are related to mental health conditions. And by 2020, major depressive illnesses will be the leading cause of disability in the world for women and children. And whereas, with early intervention and effective treatment, those individuals with mental, with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And seventy to ninety percent of individuals with serious mental health conditions can experience a reduction of symptoms and improved quality of life. And whereas reducing stigma and ensuring access to treatment and recovery supports that are proven effective. Recovery is accelerated with a further harm related to the course of illness is minimized. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their well-being. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Placer County Board of Supervisors hereby designates May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. Before you present the proclamation, I'd seen some folks here earlier that had their nice lime green on indicating that they were here in support of this. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board on this item prior to the presentation of the proclamation?
I would like to introduce Wendy Wertenberger. Wendy is the consumer liaison. She is employed with Mental Health America and she works within the Adult System of Care.
Wonderful. Good morning.
Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me to share my story with you today. At a mere fourteen years old, I had decided to give up on life. I decided I was done with it all. Little Wendy felt alone, unworthy, not popular, not smart enough, and just not good enough. On the outside, I smiled and laughed and said, "I'm fine," but that was not my truth. It is amazing what dark depths of pain can be hidden with a beautiful smile. So I gathered whatever pills I could find and put them in my little fourteen-year-old hand. I swallowed them and I laid down waiting for the end. I felt desperate and completely out of the energy to fight. Luckily, my mom discovered what I had done and she got to me just in time. At only fourteen, I had no idea what wonderful adventures life had in store for me. Had my mom not found me, I would have missed bringing life to the three beautiful children that I have. I would have missed out on the lessons I learned while struggling to work my way through junior college. And I would have missed the overwhelming feeling of pride I felt when I was accepted to UC Davis University. At only fourteen years old, I would have never even dared to imagine that not only could I work my way through UC Davis, but I also would have missed the greatest joy of my life so far, walking across the stage in front of thousands during the UC Davis School of Law graduation ceremony. Go Aggies. I also would never have had the opportunity to share my story with you here today. Due to that suicide attempt, I was hospitalized at what was then known as Charter for a whole six days. I was disoriented and scared and even ashamed that I was in a psychiatric hospital. I had my own stigma and judgments about such a place, yet here I was. I spent countless hours without speaking at all, rationalizing that I could convince them to release me if I kept quiet enough, as they obviously had their hands full with more noisy and outwardly difficult patients, yet they kept me. I told them I had no problems and I didn't understand what I was doing here. Keeping me hospitalized was a waste of time, theirs and mine, yet they kept me still. None of my friends wrote to me and it showed me how stigmatizing it can be when you're diagnosed with a mental illness like depression. During that hospitalization, I learned that while some may think being diagnosed with a mental illness means that you're, you cannot control your emotions, I discovered that my problem is actually not being able to express mine. After five days of playing this game, I finally broke down and cried, which was the first emotion I had shown at all. The lengthy session I had with my counselor at Charter taught me that denying my emotions and stuffing it all inside did not mean that I had no problems. On the contrary, it showed that I ignored the fact that I have feelings altogether. I had to come to terms with the fact that I was not perfect. While I was, while I wish that was the happy ending to my story, it is not. I became acutely familiar with postpartum depression after the birth of my daughter when I was twenty-one. As any parent knows, my ability to function while sleep deprived was truly tested during those first couple of months. There were episodes where she would cry and cry and cry and I didn't know what to do with myself or with her. On one particular occasion, my daughter cried for what seemed like hours. And after changing her diaper, feeding her, bathing her, walking, and doing the hokey pokey, netted no discernible results. I called my poor mom and said, "Help." The problem wasn't in my daughter's cries, though, it was within me. My nerves felt like they had been continuously grated over a conveyor belt made of broken glass. And every sound, facial expression, or thought could send me into a fit of crying, and I did not know why. This wailing marathon was the last straw and before I did something I would later regret, thankfully, my mom suggested that I talk to my doctor and again, I was placed on antidepressants. The combination of medication, weekly counseling, and family support navigated me safely through that time period. Again, I was lucky because I managed to reach out for help at the right time before anything serious happened. But what if I had not been brave enough to ask for help? I don't even want to imagine how bad a situation like that could have gotten. Despite these dramatic events in my life, I do believe it's important to highlight that I am living proof that a human being can maintain professionalism, have a variety of life experiences, cope with having a mental illness like depression, and still function at amazing levels on a daily basis. Now that I work within the Adult System of Care, walking the same wallpaper-covered halls that used to cause tidal waves of anxiety and loneliness now gives me a sense of hope. Recovery is possible and Placer County has been there for me every step of the way. Wonderful people have entrusted me to do their taxes, advocate zealously for them in courtroom, and contribute to my community in equally successful fashion. Just because I've been diagnosed with depression does not change my work ethic or make me an unreliable person. Even someone you know right now might be privately dealing with an internal health that could be changed by a word of understanding or simply a sympathetic ear willing to listen. Maybe that someone is you. Please don't just hide it with a smile. Even if everything appears perfectly fine on the outside, the reality is a majority of those who need help fail to reach out to get the help that they so desperately need because they're afraid of what people like you and I will think about that. Allow me to strip away that fear because guess what? I might look and act normal, or whatever that means anyways, but I must be mindful of my depression for the rest of my life. I have a vision in my mind about what healthy looks like for me. And I have come to the understanding that in my case, that means trying to enjoy myself, being mindful, and practicing the trifecta of proper diet, exercise, and self-care. We all have the choice to define what healthy looks like to us. And we must do whatever feels correct for our own body and, and personality. For the sake of my children and my own happiness, I pledge to do whatever it takes to maintain both my physical and mental health. And I will never let negative stigma or what others think about me get in the way of that. and let them know, "You are not alone." You need only take that first courageous step and talk to someone you trust. Shedding the fear and asking for help is the only reason I am standing in front of you here today, and it was the very best decision that I ever made. So when you ask someone that ever-important question, "Are you okay?" Are you really? Only you know the true answer to that. I want to thank the members of the Board again, and have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you, Wendy, for your comments, your testimony. Thank you very much. Yes. Do you have anything you want to add?
Nothing, no.
All right. Anybody else want to address the board before we formally adopt this proclamation? All right. Seeing none, why don't we go ahead and motion to approve the proclamation, then have Supervisor Holmes present?
Okay, I do have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you for your words, well-thought-out. And personal experience, I think if each one of us in this room knows has a family member or a distant relative or a friend that is suffering from mental illness, it touches all of us. And it's something that it's a stigma, and we have to erase that stigma. It's just another physical ailment. There's treatment out there. Hopefully, the state and county can provide enough resources to take care of everybody that suffers from this terrible disease. So that's all I have to say. Can I make the motion to approve the proclamation?
My seconded.
Okay. Motion, Holmes, Second Montgomery, to approve the proclamation. Promote mental health awareness by proclaiming May 20th as Mental Health Awareness Month in Placer County. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. Supervisor Holmes, you want to go ahead and present the proclamation? That'd be great. Thank you. And I believe our trusty photographer is...
So who wants to hold this? What?
You would like to have Maureen Bellman and Kristi. Thank you Supervisor Holmes, members of the Board.
Thank you.
For supporting mental health programs in our institution.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and jump to our 9:25 timed item. This is recognition of Armed Forces Day, approving a proclamation designating May 16th, 2015, as Armed Forces Day in Placer County. Supervisor Duran, before I throw it to you, folks, if you have a cellphone with you, please make sure it is on vibrate, silent mode, whatever. I'm hearing some popular people in this room getting emails and things like that. So if you'd go ahead and put those on vibrate or silent, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, I am going to be designing the proclamation. Designating May 5th, 2015, Armed Forces Day in Placer County. And I have a member of the Blue Star Moms here. Would you like to start off and kind of tell us a little bit about Armed Services Day before I read the proclamation?
Right there, the podium is fine. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you very much for having us. We are the Sacramento Blue Star Moms. We're military moms. We serve Sacramento County and South Placer. We are moms who have children who are either serving or have served in the military. We also honor the families of the fallen, and we also care and support the families of injured warriors. The Sacramento Blue Star Moms are known for sending care package. We send out about fifteen hundred care packages per year to men and women serving in harm's way. We are a nonprofit organization. We receive no donations. We do our donations by fundraising. So we also are advocates for our military. We support our military, and the bottom line is that we have the best military in the whole wide world. And we're so proud of them.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And before I read this proclamation, I would like those of you that have provided service in the Armed Services, any branch, to stand up, please, right now. And those of you...
Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much for your service, and I'll read this proclamation now. Whereas in 1947, President Harry S. Truman signed the National Security Act into law, unifying four branches of the military under a single executive authority, the Secretary of Defense. Whereas on August 31st, 1949, Secretary of Defense Louis Johnson established Armed Forces Day, which created a single holiday honoring those serving the U.S. Army, U.S. Navy, U.S. Marine Corps, U.S. Air Force, and U.S. Coast Guard, and it is celebrated annually on the third Saturday of May. Whereas the time of the first Armed Services Day was themed for defense to express unification of all military forces under a single Department of Government. Armed Forces Day, expanding public awareness of the role of the military to civilian populations they protected. And it was a day of honor to acknowledge Americans serving in the Armed Forces of the United States. And whereas on the first Armed Forces Day, President Harry S. Truman proclaimed Armed Forces Day on May 20th, 1950, which marks the first combined demonstration by America's defense team of its progress under the National Security Act. And this progress towards its goal of readiness for any eventuality. It is the first parade of preparedness for the unified forces of our land, sea, and air defense. And whereas in observance of Armed Forces Day on May 16th, 2015, the local chapter of the Blue Star Mothers of America is hosting the Honor Those Who Serve Armed Forces Day Gala on Friday, May 15th, 2015, at Timber Creek Ballroom in Roseville. Proceeds will be used to ship care packages to U.S. soldiers serving overseas to help support veteran organizations and to honor Gold Star family members. Now therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, does hereby proclaim May 16th, 2015, as Armed Forces Day in the County of Placer to honor our military and their families for their patriotic service in support of our nation. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would submit this proclamation to the Board of Supervisors.
So we have a motion by Duran and a second by Holmes in order to approve a proclamation designating May 16th as Armed Forces Day. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Thank you very much. Supervisor Duran, before you make the presentation, would any of you other ladies want to address the board on this item?
Thank you, Board. This is Dorothy Walsh, and I just wanted to thank you so much for your support. Without you and without our community, we wouldn't be able to provide the service that we do to our men and women and our children. We're very proud of them, and we're proud of you, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Chairman Yular?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you personally. I'm a Gold Star Sister, and these sorts of actions are very important to our families, so thank you.
Any other supervisors want to comment before I go up?
That's great. Thank you.
And on behalf of the Sacramento Blue Star Moms, we have challenge coins that will be represented to each and every one of you. These coins were designed by the Sacramento Chapter.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right.
Supervisor Duran, if you want to go ahead and make the presentation?
Great.
Would somebody in the back check? Somebody must have leaned up against the light switch and shut off some lights, and we're gonna get a picture here. There we go. Thank you very much.
As the proud father, brother, son, grandson of many veterans, I'm gonna make this presentation to you.
Thank you Supervisor Duran for making that presentation. Greatly appreciated. Thank you for bringing that item to our Board. We're gonna continue with the theme and roll right into our 9:30 timed item, which is a presentation by Congressman McQuintock's office of a number of young folks who have recently received appointments to our various United States Military Service Academies. Each year Congressman McQuintock, led by his District Director Rocky Deal, assembles a group of current and former United States Military Officers, representatives of the various service academies, in order to review hundreds of applicants who are applying to serve our country as officers in one of our branches by attending the various service academies. And this group has the opportunity, actually, to meet here. And here, these applicants today, we are very pleased to have the opportunity to recognize this year's selections for the various service academies from Congressman McQuintock's office. So Mr. Deal, thank you very much for being here this morning. We appreciate your time and appreciate this presentation.
Thank you. And on behalf of Congressman McQuintock, I would like to thank the members of the Board for allowing us to use your chambers here for six years. Really adds professionalism and solemnity to the process of selection. During that time, two hundred and forty young men and women have stood at this podium and worked to convince the distinguished panel of former military officers, one of which, Mike Holmes there, Navy Captain Mike Holmes, has been a consistent member of that panel, convinced them to receive a congressional nomination to one of our four service academies. And I'm happy to report that seventy-five young men and women are currently being matriculated at one of our service academies or are serving in our Armed Forces as an officer in one of those services who received a nomination as a result of this process that takes place in this room. Particularly, I'd like to thank Beverly Roberts, who has sacrificed twelve of her Saturdays in here, helping facilitate the process and helping it go smoothly. And we also rely on Jeremy Kelly to provide technical support for our Skype interviews. This last year, I'm very pleased to report that we had seventeen of our nominees receive an appointment to one of our four service academies. Six of those are your own sons or daughters from Placer County. We have three of those here today. If I can get Bryant Malesse, our field representative. Three couldn't be here today. Eric Leverance is going to the Air Force Academy. Daniel Kozinski is going to the Naval Academy. And Garrett Capella is going to the Air Force Academy. They had the AP Calculus exam today. First of all, we've got... Who've you got first, Brian? Luke Barbey, who's heading to the United States Army. U.S. Military Academy. U.S. Military Academy, West Point. And also Alexander Cooney, who's also heading for U.S. Military Academy. Congratulations. And last but not least, Gabriella Miller, heading to the United States Air Force Academy. Thank you.
Thanks again for using your chambers. Thank you. Thank you to those of you that are willing to continue in the great tradition of service that gives us the opportunity to meet like this and discuss the weighty issues that are on our agenda today. So thank you very much for your service, and best of luck to you. Thank you for being here this morning. Okay, we have a few minutes before our 9:45 timed item. So as promised, I'm going to go ahead and reopen public comment for anybody that missed the opportunity to address the board under public comment as we convened this morning at 8:30. So if there's anybody that wishes to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda, please go ahead and step forward, and we'll take as many as we can get in between now and 9:45. Good morning.
Hi, thank you for doing this for us. My name is Charlene Daniels, and I'm a resident of North Auburn. I would like to talk about what has not been discussed in hearings over the last couple of years, and that is the mixed-use land use designation at DeWitt. The development vision for DeWitt has county offices in the core area of the campus and other uses dispersed throughout the campus, and includes multifamily residential, industrial, office, civic uses, and public spaces. It is intended to be pedestrian-friendly, low-traffic generating, and well-designed. It is intended to be a place where people can live, shop, play, work in the same area. What has been discussed in these hearings is the commercial zoning. It's important to remember that zoning implements land use. The mixed-use designation has many nuances in which the strict application of the zoning ordinance does not always apply. It is critical to examine the land use and zoning together. This is one of the reasons why state law requires a community plan consistency finding. Now about private development, DeWitt. It is noted in the Costco staff report that the county determined there was sufficient capacity for commercial development at the July 2011 hearing on the facility's master plan. This was the second hearing on the plan, and it is readily apparent the plan is in the preliminary stages. The county is still gathering data and conducting studies. It is interesting to note that the July 2011 staff report does not discuss, analyze, or make any conclusions on commercial development. Ironically, the word "commercial" does not even appear in the staff report. This is the last meeting on the facilities plan, which begs the question, why doesn't the county complete the master plan to ensure that there has been adequate planning for county facilities? Isn't this the county's main priority? So, the determination that the county has additional commercial land, which does not appear to be based on fact, it sets into motion a series of events, such as the Costco negotiations, the non-renewal of tenant leases, the dissolution of the DeWitt Enterprise Fund, and there's been spending and encumbering of millions of dollars, including the approval of a $6.4 million relocation project for county offices located within the Costco footprint. While this is happening, I am watching my community slowly and systematically be dismantled, and I do not understand all the reasons why. I have done a lot of research on this topic, and I have learned that it is necessary to verify claims made by the county. Research only leads to more questions and not many answers. It can be very difficult getting answers from the county. It sometimes feels like a stalling tactic. I am asking the county to hold a board meeting in which the immediate plans for DeWitt are discussed. It is public land, and the citizens should be informed and involved in the decision-making affecting DeWitt, particularly the potential demolition of the senior center, gym, and theater. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor...
One second. Just for the information of all speakers, the Facilities Services staff will be coming to the Board in June to update us as to their update of the plan, which does exist, is twenty years old, that the county has been adhering to. We are in the process of updating it, and Facilities will be here in June to discuss that process. So with that, go ahead.
My name is Eleanor Peteska. I'm a resident of Placer County, Newcastle, to be exact. I also am... We are requesting that the DeWitt property project be put on the Board of Supervisors' agenda because the public should not have to beg to find out what's happening to public lands. There is a lot of confusion out there. Just look at the blogs and all the letters requesting information, clarification from the Board and the county. How is boarding up buildings and evicting service organizations and small businesses helping the public when according to the county, there are two years away from a master plan for DeWitt? The senior center, seniors first, Meals on Wheels, the child development center, the DeWitt Theater, the Courthouse Athletic Center, and a myriad of small businesses have been sent packing to more expensive and/or less desirable accommodations. A fiasco has affected at least three thousand people and numerous jobs. This hard-hearted, mean-spirited approach appears to accommodate private commercial development over the greater needs of the community. I have a copy of LLC Conkey's original proposal to negotiate for a Costco store. This precedes a meeting where the county actually determined that there was room to accommodate a large commercial project. It gives the impression that the determination was a setup to allow Mr. Conkey to come in with an unsolicited proposal and ultimately pocket, over time, $900,000. Facility Services says they believe the DeWitt buildings are beyond the useful service. I'd love to see that documentation. According to Dan Sebby, a professional military historian, these buildings are standard, permanent, World War II buildings, a brick and concrete. We think the county's death sentence for these buildings is premature. This project has been very much under the public radar, and I certainly hope there has been no Brown Act violations. We, the public, have a right to know what is going on and a right to have a voice in the development of our land. I submit this sad piece to you, the result of the county's cavalier policies and questionable actions. actions. Hoffman, this is a sign on one of the businesses that you booted out last year, a bakery right at Thanksgiving and Christmas, biggest time of year for this guy. Hoffman European Bakery and Catering. This is a sign on his door. Dear customers, due to loss of lease by the county of Placer and the Costco project, we are closed for good. Thank you all. Andreas. And I'd also like to add that I don't think the Child Development Center should be at the end of the runway. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Fogler. I'm with a coalition called Preserve DeWitt Legacy. In light of your commendation to the young people who are taking part in our military, I think it would be very wise to try and preserve the legacy of DeWitt. It could be done. I'm going to read a letter right now. As a member of a local residents' coalition, Preserve DeWitt Legacy, I hereby request an item to be placed on the agenda for the next Board of Supervisors' meeting. Supervisors, please create and abide by a policy endorsing a master plan for DeWitt campus which is consistent with the mixed-use designation. This would include but not be limited to preserving the theater, the senior center, the chapel, and the Courthouse Athletic Building until a master plan is created with resident input and approved. Here is the link to a recent letter to the editor. We referenced the one by Kevin Hanley, which had some really good ideas for long-term sustainability and economic drivers in that location, much better than more retail. I'd also like to mention, as a taxpayer, a voter, and a resident of Placer County, I have a major issue with the rumored $100,000 feasibility study for a new multipurpose facility. I know nothing about this. In the year that I've been working on trying to save DeWitt Theater, why was this never mentioned until now? Hmm, interesting. Third point, from the Auburn Area Recreation and Park District. Placer County Board of Supervisors, the Auburn Area Recreation and Park District, ARD, Board of Directors, would like to advise Placer County of our concerns regarding the proposed removal and demolition of recreational services and facilities at DeWitt Center, including the senior center, Courthouse Athletic Club, and DeWitt Theater. As the primary provider of recreation services in the greater Auburn area, ARD is always concerned when the community faces the loss of recreation. We would like to ask the Placer County Board of Supervisors to delay the removal of the recreational facilities from the DeWitt Center. We would also appreciate the opportunity to discuss options, partnerships, other ideas that may increase the recreational opportunities at DeWitt Center. A collaboration of local government agencies such as ARD, Placer County, the City of Auburn, school districts, working in cooperation with local advocacy and service organizations would result in the pooling of great resources with some vision and planning. Vision and planning. The community can come together to truly capitalize on this public space, to create a wonderful place to visit, conduct county business, and perhaps recreation. Sincerely, the ARD Board of Directors, thank you for your consideration. This is the kind of community collaboration that would benefit everybody, not just a few.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, Mr. Mappa, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment for now. We're gonna move to our 9:45 timed item, and then I'll take up public comment again after the 9:45 timed item. So, at this point, if you want, you can leave that with the clerk, and then after we're done with the 9:45 item, if you want to come back up and address the board, we'll open it back up at that point, all right? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna...
Want me to come back in an hour or two?
Yes. I'll stay with you here.
I'm sorry. We're gonna close public comment for now, and we're gonna take up our 9:45 timed item. And then after the 9:45 timed item, I will reopen public comment for anybody that's interested in continuing with public comment. Thank you. All right. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and take up our 9:45 timed item. This is a discussion of medical marijuana cultivation. We're being asked to receive an update on citizens' concerns and inquiries regarding medical marijuana cultivation and provide staff direction as appropriate. Thank you very much. Sir, if you want, just have a seat. We'll get to the staff presentation. If you're here to comment on the item, we'll have plenty of time for that as well, okay? So, you can just stay comfortable there and we'll get to you. Go ahead, Becky.
Good morning, Chairman Neuler, members of the board. Becky Riggan from the County Executive Office with the 9:45 timed item. Which is an update on citizen concerns regarding medical marijuana cultivation in Placer County. And we are also seeking direction from your board in response to these concerns. I am joined this morning by Brett Holt from County Council's office.
Excuse me, you can up here if you have anything.
Okay. We will, thank you. We'll ask if our sound folks can crank up the volume a little, and also Becky, if you just try to speak up a little more, project right into that microphone, make sure everybody can hear.
All right, thank you. Over the past several years, staff have received complaints with regards to the impacts associated with marijuana cultivation in Placer County. In recent months, this interest has heightened primarily from the residents in the Sheridan area, who are now asking the county to adopt a cultivation ordinance regulating these grows. Complaints have been focused primarily on the strong odor emitted by these plants. For approximately six to eight weeks during the growing cycle, the plants emit a very pungent odor likened to a strong hops or skunky smell that many consider highly unpleasant. This not only inhibits the ability of many residents to enjoy their personal property, but by alerting individuals to the existence and location of these highly valuable plants, it creates an attractive nuisance that has been associated with increased criminal activity, including burglary, robbery, and home invasions. Many residents have also highlighted the negative impacts to their property values. Other concerns include degradation of the natural environment through unlawful use and divergence of water, the misuse of pesticides and fertilizers and other chemicals which can impound groundwater quality. Many have expressed concern about impacts to local water availability, particularly given the drought, as the literature suggests that mature trees can require up to six to eight gallons of water per watering. Also, both indoor and outdoor cultivation have been linked to dangerous electrical alterations, and inside grow lights can overload standard electrical systems, causing increased risk To demonstrate the concerns of the residents in the Sheridan area, we utilized Google Earth photography. We captured two photos of Sheridan taken first in 2010. And again in 2005.
Fifteen.
I'm sorry, 2015. The increased agriculture is noticeable in numerous locations in the 2015 photo with what appear to be marijuana cultivation sites.
Excuse me, excuse me. Ladies and gentlemen, that's not how this proceeds. Staff will make a presentation. There will be time for public comment. Any member of the public that wants to come up and ask a question of the board is more than welcome to do so, including statements made during the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick overview of the status of the law and actions taken by other jurisdictions. This map is from the Marijuana Policy Project and demonstrates the changing legal landscape that has occurred in the past several years across the country, spurring discussions among policymakers, law enforcement officials, the medical community, and the public. The federal government maintains marijuana as a Schedule I controlled substance and thus prohibits the manufacture, distribution, and possession of marijuana. Many states, however, have deviated from an across-the-board prohibition and have established a range of views and policies regarding medical and recreational use. These evolving state-level positions on marijuana, including legalization of certain quantities for recreational uses, legal exceptions for medical uses, and decriminalization initiatives, meaning individuals are subject to administrative fines and penalties rather than jail time. In the four states shown in blue, Alaska, Washington, Oregon, and Colorado, marijuana is legal for adults and is taxed and regulated similarly to alcohol. District of Columbia voters have also made it legal for adults to possess and grow marijuana, but the initiative is currently undergoing congressional review. The states in black have both medical marijuana law and have decriminalized possession of small amounts of marijuana. The dark gray areas are states that have decriminalized possession of small amounts of marijuana, and the light gray areas are states that have passed only medical marijuana laws. Collectively, as of November 2014, over half of the states, along with the District of Columbia, allow for medicinal use of marijuana in some capacity. These voter initiatives all legalize the possession of specific quantities of marijuana by individuals aged 21 and over, and with the exception of the District of Columbia, all set up state-administered regulatory systems for the sale of marijuana. But these initiatives all vary. For example, Colorado, Alaska, Oregon, and DC allow for individuals to grow their own marijuana plants, while Washington does not allow for private citizen cultivation. These changes in state laws have spurred a number of questions regarding their potential implications for federal law enforcement activities and for the nation's drug policies as a whole. So, just a brief review of pertinent California legislation. The 1996 Compassionate Use Act provided limited immunity for possession and cultivation of medical marijuana. In 2004, Senate Bill 420 and a subsequent decision by Supreme Court establishes what's known as the state's six, eight, and 12 guidelines for arrest, six mature plants, possession of up to eight ounces of processed marijuana, and up to 12 immature plants unless a jurisdiction specifically allows more or a California physician recommends more, which occurs with some frequency, up to sometimes 99 plants per patient. So, suffice to say, the state of law in California regarding medical marijuana lacks clarity. By November 2016, we will know the results of the voter initiative to legalize marijuana for recreational purposes that was filed on April 20th of 2015, along with the results of approximately half a dozen proposed regulatory bills that seek to provide greater clarity and a regulatory framework. State legislators are attempting to put forward legislation to address some of the confusion and to provide a comprehensive regulatory framework and establish a coordination that should exist between state and local governments in this area of the law, and these are summarized in the next two slides. Senate Bills 165 and 643 seek to clarify natural resource-related violations with the production or cultivation of a controlled substance. So, in response to the somewhat vague current legal landscape, many local jurisdictions have developed regulation incorporating many of the restrictions outlined in this slide in response to some of the concerns raised here today, including where cultivation is allowed to occur, limitations on the number of plants or on allowable square footage for cultivation purposes, and setback requirements. Some require registration or set limitations on locations, primarily distance requirements from child-centered facilities. And some establish structural requirements such as single-family home, fence heights, screening, et cetera. Regulations in the greater Sacramento region are summarized in this slide, again demonstrating a variety of results. Placer does not have an ordinance that directly relates to marijuana cultivation, and there is no zoning that currently allows for this use. Sacramento and Yuba have banned outdoor growing but allow indoor with dwelling and plant restrictions. And the balance of counties listed above have established regulations that include registration, zoning, space, or number of plant restrictions. For frame of reference, we have included some photos. These next six photos are specifically from the Placer County 215 Compliance Patrols conducted by the Placer County Sheriff's Office and demonstrate the horticultural expertise that has been developed with these plants over the years. For reference, this is an eight-foot ladder demonstrates the size of some of these plants. These photos demonstrate the size of some Placer County grow sites. And again, some of the greenhouse and other structures that have been constructed. This picture demonstrates what are referred to as guerrilla grows, cultivation that can occur on secluded areas absent land rights. These photos are from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and are from various Northern California cultivation sites and demonstrate illegal water diversion. Other issues, including unpermitted ponds, grading, water diversion demonstrated by these U.S. Photoservice photos. This is a tank designed specifically for storing diverted water. So, that concludes our formal presentation. Staff are seeking direction regarding marijuana cultivation in the unincorporated areas of Placer County. We have identified three broad options for consideration by your board this morning. The first is to develop a resolution banning marijuana cultivation. Second, to develop recommendations for regulation. And third, we could take a wait-and-see approach with the pending state regulatory legislation that has been proposed.
That concludes staff report. Okay, thank you. Questions by board members at this time? Supervisor Montgomery.
I do have one, just clarifying question on the options. You say develop a resolution banning marijuana cultivation. Would that be all both indoor and outdoor in this proposal or just outdoor?
That would be up to your board, is this question, to do either or both?
Okay, so that's a bifurcated recommendation.
Could be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a representative of the Sheriff's Department here that I could ask a question of? Would you mind stepping forward, sir? Please identify yourself.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Wayne Wu. I'm a captain, assigned to field operations with the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for being here, Captain. Question for you, today, our Sheriff's Department continues to conduct searches for and interruption of outdoor grows on public lands. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And at this point, however, the Sheriff's Department is not doing the same thing on private land? Or are we?
We do, and those are generally as a result of a citizen complaint, neighborhood complaint, quality of life issue. We'll respond out and just check to make sure they're in compliance with Proposition 215.
Okay. And so, it's the position of your office that the grows on public lands, there's no way that they're in compliance with Prop. 215? And the private grows, if they meet certain requirements, then you believe that they are? Is that the distinction?
Yes. The illegal grows we still handle is a criminal case. We still investigate them, and we still forward them to the district attorney's office. The medicinal marijuana grows, we just make sure they're within compliance of the state law.
Okay. And so far, in terms of response to complaints, what has been the finding of your department in terms of those that are in compliance versus those that are out of compliance?
The majority of them are probably within compliance. As noted in the staff report, the state law is fairly vague. Speaking to our detectives who are responsible for that activity, what they're starting to find is the majority of the recommendations they're seeing are for 99 plants, and that of late, over about the last 12 months, approximately 50% of those recommendations that they're encountering are not Placer County residents.
Okay. Now, currently, is there, in your understanding, a conflict between the regulation of the substance between state and federal law?
Yes. Well, according to federal law, it's still banned.
Okay. But you, as the county sheriff and the county being an agency of the state, it has been the determination of your department that regardless of the status under federal law, we're only looking to enforce the state law? Is that why, even though we still have the federal prohibition, we allow for the grows?
Yeah, I think we're definitely in a growing period of this right now, and the Sheriff's Office is definitely sensitive to the will of the voters and is abiding by, I think, that demonstration as of the vote on Proposition 215.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Duran, you have questions?
Yeah. And you just talked about the federal overlay, and I'm sure that the Sheriff's Office is aware that the Department of Justice has issued several... aware that the Department of Justice has issued several releases addressing this particular issue and basically saying that they are only going to prosecute certain crimes related to trafficking sub-sales to children. They've outlined specific indicia that will trigger a federal investigation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As far as regulation goes, I've heard, and you can kind of clarify, that Sacramento has an outside ban on outside banning, and what I've heard, and please, I need your comments here, is that it's a mess enforcement-wise. Is that correct?
I have not heard that personally, so I can't comment on that. I've, you know, anecdotally, and speaking to some of our investigators who have talked to some of the agencies responsible in other counties that have bans, some of the more regulated, not just a quick ban on outdoor, are a little more difficult to enforce.
That's enough for right now. Thank you.
Supervisor Wagan. Supervisor Wagan, before you ask your question, just want to inform the folks, I see some people recording. You're certainly welcome to do that, but wanted to let you know that we record all board meetings, and full recordings of our board meetings are available online typically within 24 hours of the conclusion of the board. So if your arms get tired holding your cameras up, or you run out of battery space and all the rest, this is all being recorded by professional equipment throughout the room, and you're certainly welcome to access that and download it right off the web. So with that, Supervisor Wagan?
First of all, thanks, Wayne. Appreciate you coming today. Could you give a more detail, sort of examples, if you will, of the kinds of complaints that you check up on for legal grows, the nature of those complaints? When you go out and there's actually a legal grow, but could you describe how you got there, what the people are complaining about?
It varies from odor, size, you know, because there is some vague legislation. Some people are not educated on it, so residents, just because they see 200 plants, might think it's out of compliance, but depending on the number of recommendations, it might fall within compliance. So we get those. We've received some. It has to do with quality of life. We've received other complaints with has to do with property values, where a resident could not sell their house because right over their back fence was a medicinal grow, and it was turning away potential buyers of the residence, and had to continue to lower the price of the house.
Anything else? All right. If there are no more questions by board members and no additional, thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind hanging around, though?
Yes, sure.
And no additional questions by board members and no additional information by staff, we will open the public comment on this item now. I'm anticipating that there might be a few of you that there might be a few of you that wish to speak to the board under public comment. We do ask to try to, first of all, identify, not try to, but do, identify yourself and where you're from. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, given the number of folks that are here and what I anticipate might be a number of public comments. By respecting the three-minute time limit, we can hopefully move through and accommodate everybody before we need to move on with other items on the board agenda. So with that, sir, please go ahead.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on this matter of cultivating marijuana. My name is Daniel Ellison. I'm a lifelong resident of Placer County, and I'm a property owner in Placer County, have been for many, many years. I grew up in Baxter, graduated from Alta Elementary School, Colfax High School, and later got an AA degree from Sierra College. The only two years that I have not lived in Placer County, I served in the United States Army. And in 1969, I went to work for Placer County Department of Public Works. I lived nearly three years, actually a little over three years, in Lake Tahoe, working for the road department. Then I transferred to Auburn, and I worked on the tree crew and the sign crew. And by the end of 1976, believe me, I have worked and traveled on absolutely every county road in this county. And so I am very much aware of how diverse Placer County is, as you guys are all aware of how diverse Placer County is. Placer County is now nearing 380,000 people in population, with nearly two-thirds of that population in the six incorporated cities in Placer County. That leaves one-third of the population mostly in Jennifer's District. And just yesterday, on May 4th, I went to the code enforcement, and I asked them what the main complaint was, and they said that they received very few complaints about marijuana. However, they told me that they have received mainly three complaints from the Sheridan area, and they could remember one complaint in the Forest Hill area. That's four complaints. And they said the majority of the complaints were off of Karchner Road. Okay. That being said, where were all those people back when the turkey farms were there? Because that didn't smell good. And there was a fly problem. Anyway, now that we know that this is not a huge problem in Placer County, the complaints, that is, what are you guys going to do about it? There are several things you could do. You could do like Sacramento and Yuba County, ban all outdoor grows, and that would probably stop some growers. Some growers would move out of the county, leave altogether. Others would probably simply move their operation indoors. And actually, that would be a good thing, because now they could control the smell of marijuana through charcoal filters. But now we have to remember, as this lady pointed out, there's the fire problem with overloading the electrical circuits. So with that in mind, that somebody, and it may only take one person, move their outdoor grow indoors and overload the circuit, start a house fire. Now maybe some of you, Jennifer needs to look into this real carefully, what is the response time from the all-volunteer fire departments to some rural area such as Michigan Bluff, Iowa Hill?
I'm going to ask, out of respect for all the other folks that are going to want to comment, if you try to cut your comments short at this point, your three minutes have expired.
We need to, you need to consider the fire danger. If a forest fire breaks out, what have you guys done? So Jennifer, you need to stand up for your constituents and fight for our right to grow.
And, ladies and gentlemen, everybody will have their opportunity to speak. We appreciate your enthusiastic support of various folks' opinions, but if we want to kind of move through and give everybody the opportunity to speak before I have to close public comment by about 11 o'clock, then if we could keep the interruptions to minimum and allow the speakers to get through their comments, that'd be great. Go ahead, sir.
Lee Bastian, Sheridan Elementary. And as the gentleman says, he's made it to the county, but we always get, that's our number-one complaint, is the grow, is the smell. The other thing is, for the update, since she did her report, Sutter County has also now outbound, outdoor growing. So what we're finding is the people that the counties have banned outdoor grows, they're coming to Placer County. The second thing, I'm representing Sheridan Elementary School, and I've been asked to read a letter, if that's okay with the board?
We've all been presented with a letter from the Sheridan Elementary School, and it is submitted as part of the record. If there's, might be one quick excerpt you want to read, that'd be fine, but if we could save the time and not read the entire letter?
Okay. You mean, you've got it, I'll let you?
We all have it, it's sitting right here in front of me, and it has been submitted to the court as well, so it's part of the public.
Because they're basically concerned about the smell and the kids.
I read it, and I agree. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, I am a property owner from Sheridan, California, and I'd like to address the board. I'd like to start by objecting to a ban on outdoor growing in Placer County for many reasons.
I need your name for the record, please.
Tabitha Hayward, the property owner of Sheridan, California.
Thank you, Tabitha.
I would first like to start by objecting to a ban on outdoor growing in Placer County for many reasons. First, I would, I believe that the ban would not stop people from growing. It would only make it harder for legitimate patients to have access to medication. While forcing out legitimate growers, you leave the door open for what she referred to as guerrilla farmers, people who grow illegal crops on public land and either other people's private land, while leaving a disaster of pollution, garbage, and natural resources in their wake. In 2010, 2011, the Board of Supervisors, under the direction of, excuse me, Michael Johnson, passed a ban on dispensaries in Placer County. Without any dispensaries in Placer County, and a cultivation ban would only take away patients' safe and fair access to medication and putting it in the hands of criminals, forcing responsible growers and patients to surge a crime-riddled black market for their medication. In the case of the hemp industry versus the DEA, which went all the way before Congress, the results were that the CSA permits the cultivation of cannabis. This applies in respect to all cannabis plants, regardless of the THC content. Every federal court that has examined this issue has also ruled. Monson vs. the DEA in 589, the United States versus White Bloom, 447, the New Hampshire Hemp Council versus Marshall in 203. An applicant must demonstrate, among other things, that it will install security measures consistent with requirements set forth for the DEA. So under the DEA and Congress definition, there is no difference between a hemp plant and a marijuana plant, and a hemp plant is legal to grow with regulations. And I am a proponent of regulation and taxation under these guidelines. I understand that the issue in front of the board today is largely based on the complaints coming from the town of Sheridan, in which I am a property owner. There are 1,286 people that make up the population of Sheridan. If this ban was voted on by the public, you would see an overwhelming, overwhelming majority vote not to ban. You cannot take away rights of the majority based on the opinions of a minority. As a resident property owner of Sheridan, I can acknowledge that there is a wild west mentality toward growing. Sorry, I'm trying to talk fast. All the more reasons for regulation and taxation. You also have to take into consideration that medical marijuana growing is not the biggest problem Sheridan faces. And I'm sure a lot of the sheriffs here can agree on me. If you want to clean out Sheridan, let's start with the methamphetamine problem, which causes the biggest crime rate and brings on the quality of living of our town. The Board of Supervisors want to tell us what we can do in our town, yet put no effort into our parks and our parks and community centers are dilapidated. We have very minimal or no public work systems. Sewer systems need to be upgraded, public water, parks. Our schools are so forgotten about that most residents send their children to schools in different counties, towns, and cities. The abandoned house and property issue, more sidewalks, drainage system, and the list can just keep going. So until the board wants to address the real problems facing Sheridan, they should not force their own personal agenda on a town that is not interested. Furthermore, if they were to go in front of borders, you would find an overwhelming majority of voters in the entire town and county who do not support this ban. There are four initiatives in the works to go on the ballot for California 2016 to legalize marijuana in the entire state that are expected to pass, at least one of them. So when the state passes legalization, then what? So I would take a stance to hold and wait and see what the state recommends as far as their guidelines. Now, Placer County is also, California is one of the most regulated states in the Union, and Placer County is becoming one of the most regulated counties, sorry, in the state. And we're turning it into a police state. This also becomes a land use issue, and we need less government involvement and more, with such a rural county, we need to listen to the voters of the county. Sorry, I know my time's up. I can't fit it all in. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors.
Morning still, fortunately.
It is. Oh, wow, I never get up this early. I have a little baby, and so he has his own sleep schedule. But my name is Kimberly Cargile, and I am from the Sacramento Chapter of Americans for Safe Access. I'm a landowner, I'm a voter, I'm a college graduate, I'm a cannabis grower, a patients' rights advocate, and a dispensary CEO. I am not a criminal. I suggest that you enact permitting regulations, a system to negate the negative effects that you're seeing in your community. We've done this in Sacramento, and in Sacramento, with the dispensaries, because Prop. 215 calls for not only our citizens to be able to use cannabis, but also to obtain cannabis, you have to at least provide for dispensaries or cultivation, one or the other, in order to go along with state law, the law of the voters, the highest level of law. In Sacramento, because it's an urban area, we have dispensaries instead of cultivation. Here, it's rural, it seems like you would do the opposite, or at least have a little bit of both. My point being that our city council collects over a million dollars a year in taxes, and you can collect that money, too. You can use money to help your community instead of banning it. The problem with a ban is it creates a thriving black market. It puts the cultivation in the hands of criminals. In this audience today, these people care about the environment. They are citizens, they are voters, and they are also not criminals. If you can set up some reasonable regulations, then you can handle your problems. I'm actually personally working on these bills, and these bills are at least two years out as far as the regulations come out. So if we enact these bills, we have four regulation bills right now. One is going to pass, which is great. It'll give guidelines for the entire state. But those regulations are at least two years out. So creating a ban at this point is only going to cause more problems, and if you can at least create some reasonable regulations, or at least give some guidelines to your police department on how to handle these things, it can easily be fixed. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Heidi Grossman, and I'm here from Sacramento-Normal. I'm the executive secretary. I, thank you. I also own, or I don't own, I am the CEO and the founder of a nonprofit organization, and maybe I can help clarify for you what the law states. The cannabis law is very clear. There are three ways to operate as collectives and cooperatives. People vs. Jackson states that we have to be mutual benefit nonprofit corporations. So we also have a statutory entity, which is the nonprofit corporation, but we also have a collective, which is an unincorporated association, which we register with the state of California, and that makes us legal, and that gives us the right, not the privilege. So I understand that the fishing game and the sheriffs are doing their job in eradicating the illegal guerrilla growers and the people that we don't want in our business. The Compassionate Use Act is called compassionate because we're trying to save lives. My garden was raided last year, and I lost a patient because he didn't get his medicine. He was three years old. And I hear stories every week of children and people not being able to have access to their medicine or even grow it for themselves. People vs. Orlofsky allows us to be a collective without registering with the state of California. We're allowed to associate within our friends and our families and our communities. If we operate as a business and we're patient providers, we're providing for dispensaries. We have to be registered with the state of California, and that's how we operate legally. And unfortunately, these legal operations, like mine, are getting caught in the crossfire with the guerrillas and the people destroying our environment. And I lost my medicine, and I lost a patient. So please, I would take the wait-and-see approach because legalization is coming and you can't stop it. And cannabis saves lives, and we need to keep providing safe access, and I hope that you all find it within your heart to recognize that we out here, some of us are dying. We may look healthy, but some of us are not, and some of our children are suffering from epilepsy, autism, all kinds of horrible cancers. And cannabis cures, so please remember that.
Hi, my name is Ed Pettit. I'm a retired school teacher. I teach history, government. Hi, my name is Ed Pettit. I'm a retired school teacher. I teach history, government. I moved here five years ago. I live in the Mount Pleasant area. And as the act, I'll probably be the shortest speaker here. As the action requested, option number one is not an option for you, because you'll be in the courts with litigation, because you'll be in violation of the state constitution, actually in federal, because you cannot ban marijuana in the county. As you previously heard before, you have two options. These options were developed by laws approved by the State of California and by the Attorney General prior to 2004, who is our current governor. He clarified very explicitly what you can and cannot do, and that it was clarified in 2004. As to this thing that was proposed, it was very inadequate, because how many people are going to use chemicals to grow marijuana that is not organic?
You keep your comments to the board, please.
So if it is not organic, it is literally threatening the health and safety, so that's not an issue. I suggest to Sheridan that they incorporate, if they're unincorporated, and that they can control it, just like Rockland and Roseville and many different areas. But you're treading in an area that you'll be wasting money of the county in doing anything right now, because in myself, my neighbors, one neighbor has 50 donkeys. Anybody familiar with donkeys?
Yes.
They're not very quiet. They don't smell good. And then my other neighbor has 200 head of cattle. Do I complain? So there's some issues here. Placer County is changing. We're one of the four top safest counties in the State of California. The New York Times just came out with, "We are also one of the best places to live." Nationally. We and Eldorado County are the safest places, yet the issue of marijuana is about cultivation is a problem. I guess we need to educate more the citizens about what's going on. But this is not a fair. I think you need to adjourn this topic, allow more people to digest this presentation, and I think the people who did the presentation needs to go back and look at statistics. Because as it goes, as the crime ends this county, it is not a huge issue. There are people who are generationally offended. And I need to tell you that I come from a state that is ultra-conservative. I'm from Texas. We grow marijuana plants there that are 35 to 70 feet tall. There is not a fence that you can put up that will hide it. But it's like saying to the mandarin growers, you know, "We need to do something about mandarins."
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Sue Scott, and I've lived in Auburn for over 22 years. I am also a full-time employee, work for a school district, as well as my husband works for a local glass shop in town. I have severe back problems, and I'm riddled with arthritis, and my husband's had several knee surgeries. I've been growing marijuana in my backyard for seven years. I've always grown under the legal limit. I've never had a police officer knock on my door. I've never had a problem. As far as the smell goes, it's two months out of the year. I have a neighbor that smokes continuously, nonstop, and I have to smell his cigarette smoke 24/7, even in the middle of the night, and I don't complain. And I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. I just, I would like you to postpone this because you're hurting the people that really need this. You know, there's not a lot of places I can go and buy pot from, and I don't really want to anyways, because I don't know what they're selling me. I don't know what the clubs are getting. I don't know where they get their marijuana, and although some of them are testing it, I don't know what they have, and I do know what I have in mine, and I don't use chemicals. Mine are all naturally organic, so I know what I'm putting in my body. So I'm asking you to postpone this. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Ma'am, ma'am, I have a quick question. For my edification, you're growing for your own medical use. How many plants do you have?
Seven.
You have seven, and that meets your needs on an annual basis?
Yeah, for two of us.
For two of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you, Board of Supervisors. Good morning, I will say. My name is Shelby Lucero, and I am with Sacramento Normal. My job there is Department of Government Affairs, so I work with people like you on a daily basis. I'm also an ex-mayor of a small town and a mother of a child that's had pediatric cancer. So I want to address some of the issues that we have here today. Last week, we were at the Capitol. There was recently a meeting regarding the reform of marijuana, as we call it cannabis. The law enforcement officials were there from each and every county, and they said they were not going to grow after the patients. They were only going to go after the people that we've seen that are devastating the forest, poisoning the wildlife, and we urge you to do so. Those films were heartbreaking. The fracking was terrible. But we have a selected group of patients here that need cannabis, and cannabis does save their lives. You have no safe access in your county as far as dispensing, and we're asking you to please work with the medical cannabis community to probably create a draft for your, of an ordinance for your community. I also wanted to say that I'm currently working with the Cal Chiefs Association and the League of Cities to help write AB 266. So we are qualified people. We know what the guidelines are in California. We've seen this work, and we're just asking you to please reach within your hearts and souls, listen to these people. There are patients out there that are dying, that can only use cannabis as medicine, and we don't want that to happen to your community. Please allow them to not ban, but continue to work with the community and allow patients to have safe access. Thank you.
Just a quick question for you, ma'am. Quick question for you, in follow-up to my question of the previous speaker. In terms of the medical use on an annualized basis, is her experience of seven plants for two people on an annual basis, that about consistent with what you folks like?
That is not my opinion. That would be the opinion of her doctor. Only her doctor can tell her what her recommendation should read.
So you-
And I don't know her medical condition, and I'm not a medical-
So there is industry-wide, even though we've been having this conversation now for decades about the medicinal use of marijuana, industry-wide, there's no accepted standard or prevailing wisdom in terms of one medicinal marijuana user consumes on an annual basis, the marijuana is supported by X number of plants. There's no, there's been nothing? We've been having this conversation for decades, and there's nothing that has any kind of a correlation?
Mr. Yul, let me just bring this back full circle. Some people use cannabis to make a tincture for drops for sick children, and that might require 12 plants for that child. Depends on if you have epilepsy or cancer. Other people might juice with it. That would require them to have 10 to 20 plants, maybe more. I don't know.
So then there is. There are, you just identified acceptable standards that are based on the needs of an individual patient.
Every patient has their own individual needs, just like if you had back surgery and you needed Vicodin, your doctor would tell you exactly, exactly how many to take per hour, per day, or if Mr. Carden had arthritis and he needed a medication for something, only his doctor would be able to prescribe that for him. There is no recommended dosage for arthritis, or for pain for back surgery, or for somebody that has lupus. It's each an individual-
You're correct in all that, but also my doctor can go to jail for over-prescribing?
Of course he can.
And I can go to jail if my medicine gets into the hands of somebody for which it's not prescribed?
Absolutely.
And so-
As it should be in the cannabis industry as well.
Okay, so if we're going, if we're going to do that, then we, there clearly are standards that should be discernible, and for which there should be some kind of adherence.
Correct, and under the California Compassionate Use Act, it says no diversion. You're not supposed to share your medicine, just like you're not supposed to share any other prescription. You can share with another patient that has a recommendation from their doctor, but it doesn't say how much. There clearly needs to be a language within regulation, and that's what we're working on with 266. But a complete ban would be horrific.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've got a question.
I'm sorry, we have questions from both ends. Supervisor Waggon, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think this is a pivotal question. Thanks, and I think, I don't know, Becky, if you have some standards, but I think there actually are some standards, just like there would be with Vicodin. There are certain limits as to what one would be prescribed, or maybe Wayne might have some comments. I've had some conversations with people. I certainly don't have any expertise, but I think that standard, even if it's a wide range, is something that would be helpful for us, be helpful for me and all.
Excuse, excuse me. We do have the opportunity for public comment.
Okay. I don't know, Becky, if you have some comments or-
Thank you.
Well, my only response would be that I tried to research these types of standards, and I will say that I found great variety among the research that I was taking a look at, based on some of the arguments that were put forward here, based on the individual's medical condition and a number of other, other factors, how they use cannabis, so I couldn't find anything that was formal guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Duran, you-
Yeah, the difficulty I'm having is with this whole number of plants per person, because it's my understanding that irrespective, you know, that we have a state standard, but, you know, one person can grow for, you know, 50 people. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
That's not correct, okay. There is a limitation on how many, how many people that can be part of a collective, correct?
That's not correct either.
Okay, okay.
Then what's the-
So what's the limitation?
Right now, there is no limitation, but because your county belongs to you, you can make your own standards and guidelines, and that's why I'm urging you to have a private meeting with the cannabis community to help you draft an ordinance that's right for your county.
And that kind of gets to my point, is because if you try to nail it down to a certain number of plants, and we have very little data to show, you know, what connects to what, it makes it very difficult for us to play doctor, I guess.
Well, we can, we can do this in a private meeting. That won't take up your time here with the public. We can provide you different patients with different limits that they need, maybe cancer, or seizure, or, you know, anything along that line, and we can tell you exactly how much they use, and you can make your own mind up. Fair enough?
Anything else, Supervisor?
No.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for answering the questions. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Hello, thank you for having this hearing. My name is Betsy Kluga. I'm a resident of Placer County. I'm a homeowner. I'm also a licensed physician assistant. I graduated from USC Med School. My last employment was in, I'm a pain management specialist. I'm retired now because of a severe injury to my neck. I tripped over the dog in the dark, so I can't work for a doctor anymore. It's a liability issue. So however, I do have a DEA license, and it's inactive at this point because I am retired. After retirement, I did work for a pot doc for a while until I found out that it was totally illegal, and so I had to quit, unfortunately. It was one of the best jobs I ever had because I am definitely a pro marijuana advocate. I've been a cancer survivor. I've been using marijuana for pain, for different ailments, for about 40 years. I'm also a grower, a very small grower and organic grower. I support any mom-pop grow that wants to grow specifically for their own personal needs or for their family's needs, if they are certified with a script. You had some questions earlier that I might be able to answer if you want them answered outside of this committee as far as, you know, medical issues go. I'd be more than happy to answer them. Someone brought up the, 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 the item of smell. Apparently, although I haven't encountered any, there are strains now where there's no smell. I guess everybody's trying to scoot under the radar, so maybe in the future that will not be an issue. As far as property values go, I live in a very small area in Weimar. Within a seven-half radius, there are four grows. One grow is a basement grow, one grow is a hydroponic grow, one grow is a 99 plant chemical grow, and then there's mylil grow. And we all get along real well. There's been no law enforcement problems. There's been no complaints from neighbors. My neighbor that lived next to the 99 plant grow just sold her house for $100,000 over market. So I think it depends on the Realtor and not the marijuana grow. So I want to thank you again for taking the time and for hearing all these comments, and I'll be available if you would like to talk privately.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Michelle Davidson. My husband, Ron Davidson. We are residents in Applegate, and we are homeowners that are next to a 99 plant permitted grow. We don't have an issue with people who grow it for medical purposes. I think that's very important that we maintain that. But we do need to be respectful of property owners and their rights that are adjacent to that. Our property, our neighbor has 20 acres. They put their 99 plant grow right next to our property line in the corner where our properties meet. We asked them to please move it because the smell is so bad, and you have to drive through, drive along our driveway to go buy it, and they like it where it's at because it's nice and secluded, and they keep pit bulls in there, and they sleep with their grow. And I have to tell you, it is a great concern for our safety when I have to drive home at night, and I have to drive over the hill into, into a spot where their grow is, and I'm concerned for my safety. If they're concerned enough about getting ripped off, I'm a sitting duck. So the safety issue is a very big one for us. We're very concerned about our property value, because you can't access our property without driving through this grow area. So I think with regulation, this could be something that could really help property owners so that small amounts or grown away from property lines with some significant setbacks and some protections from, from other homeowners who do not want to have this impacting them would be respectful for everyone in the community. We urge you to please take some regulation, put some regulations in place for other homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak, and I'd just like to make a couple of comments in support of my wife. First of all, I'd like to reiterate the point that we have no problem at all with the cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes. I think it's a very legitimate and a very valuable need in our community. And I think that also needs to, there needs to be a balance to protect those homeowners and their properties that my wife was speaking of. And just a brief comment about that. Our neighbors live on 20 acres. They placed their grow where it cannot even be seen from their own house. They don't have to drive by it. In fact, the people they've invited in to do the grow, tend the plants, and they are not there. Well, we drive by it, and it's right growing over our property fence. And it is, I think, an assault on our standard of living, our quality of life and our property, our property values. And all we are asking is for some regulation. We would have absolutely no problem if they took the same grow and granted us a little bit of respect by moving it back from our fences, by putting it on their property in a place where it is not going to be interfering with our style of life, because there certainly is room for that. And if those kinds of things are done, you know, we would all be fine. So we are simply asking, I believe that there is some regulation needed. We are moving towards a more liberal situation as far as marijuana goes in our state, as several people have mentioned, and that's, it's going to happen. The need for medical marijuana is very valid and very important, and I think to ensure that in the future, that regulation will help to do that as well. So I would urge the board to move along with option number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, this is the second time I've been in front of this body in about six months, and I haven't been in front of a body like this in years. My name is Kent Brazveen. I'm a graduate of the Juilliard School. I was involved in the media industry in Los Angeles, and I am resident composer for a private philosophical organization in Applegate, California. I did not want to be here. The president of the organization called me and said, "Aha, we have a duty for you other than your normal duties," which I'm usually left alone to fulfill. we have a duty for you other than your normal duties," which I'm usually left alone to fulfill. He was very concerned about the fact that, oh, we've been there 100 years, we don't grow marijuana inside or outside, but he was very concerned about the fact that his right to do so was about to be altered, and he didn't think this should be so. I think that part of that has to do with the, with the contact with our neighbors. We have an extensive amount of property, and four of six neighbors that are but our property are NRA card carrying, Fox News devotees, conservative provincial Placer County people. They all grow, and it would be, it would be very interesting, not, not big, they have their family gardens, it's like, like an archetype, a stereotype, they have their family gardens, their vegetables, the zucchini, the carrots, and the marijuana plants. These people would be exceedingly upset to know that they were being branded as a criminal for growing. These people would be really upset, and these people, these people do not look like the normal people that you think. Yes, we have a lot of people here that look like people that could consume marijuana, these people don't look like it. You have, you have no, you have no idea of the demographic, demographics of marijuana consumption in this county. You do it now, you vote now, you ban it now, and wait till election time comes, then you'll see how many people in this county. So, thank you for your time, my obligation is finished. Have a good day. Thank you.
Very artistic and passionate presentation, appreciate that. Have fun following that one.
Hello, my name, my name is Levi Yano, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I come today as a Yuba County property owner. I own in the foothills, in the Dobbins area. When I bought mid-last year, it was extremely hard to find property, and the value of it was very high. In the last two months, Zillow has dropped the value of my property $10,000, since Yuba County enacted a ban. So, my three minutes at this podium is going to be focused more toward the very minute amount of people here in favor of a ban, to let them know, your property values will drop if your property is not in demand. See, there's a little something in not just this country, but this world called supply and demand, and if your property is not in demand, or your product is not in demand, it's not valued as much. You will lose value on your property if all the people who live in Placer County and grow can no longer grow, and put their properties up for sale. You should see it, the foothills of Yuba County, for sale signs everywhere. Eight months ago, you couldn't find a property there, it was extremely hard. Now, go up and down Marysville Road, through Brown's Valley, through Oregon House, through Dobbins, through Brownsville, properties for sale everywhere, and guess what? They're not selling, they're just sitting there with the signs, which makes property value go down dramatically. The bottom line is, take a good look at me, and take a good look at the majority of people in this room. The scope of California and the nation is changing. I am America, and so are the rest of these people. Don't kill, don't kill your property values, don't kill our rights. Take some consideration for the people who have money invested in this county, and that will undoubtedly lose money if you ban outdoor growing. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jeff Burnett, I represent JB's Garden, I am an outdoor grower in this county, and I'm very proud to be. I am 100% organic, I use no chemicals whatsoever in any of my plants. So, some of these bans are really just not true, because what's being done is not what is being said. I'm tired, as an American, of being clumped into a category, and my rights continually taken away. Therefore, this is why I stand in front of you today. I'm a normal person, I'm disabled, I worked a career of 23 years in automotive industry, and became disabled for doing right. I continue to do right, I follow the laws and all the mandations, but everybody wants to be thrown into a lump category, and I'm tired of being thrown into that category. So I stand before you today, as an individual, an American, a tax-paying citizen of this county, who pays your wage and everybody who enforces it, that if you ban, you're taking away my rights. You're taking away my rights as an American, as a patient, as someone who can no longer afford to purchase it, therefore has had to learn to grow it. This is what Americans do, we adapt and overcome, and if you guys cannot pay attention to what's going on around you, or find a way to regulate it so you profit, because we all know that that's what it's about, the old greenback. And if you can't find the way to regulate it so that you profit from it as well, then that's an issue you've got to resolve. By banning it is not going to fix it. Not only that, like I said before, you continue to take away our rights. These are rights that we voted for, and rights that we deserve as Americans, as human beings. And if people cannot start seeing that picture, then there's going to be big, big problems in society. So take a look at it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board. My name is Don Bessie, I'm the Executive Director of SAM, Smart Approaches to Marijuana of Nevada, of Northern California. We're a science-based organization that was founded by Dr. Kevin Sabet and Patrick Kennedy, former congressman. Our leadership is primarily prevention specialists and recovery specialists, we're very focused on youth prevention. And I also look at this issue through the prism as someone who is disabled. Now, when we talk about 99 plant grows, 200 plant grows, let's all be honest, nobody's acknowledging the level of diversion from grows of that size. And Prop 215, while it does allow, it also expressly states this is not a profit-making venture. It further directs municipalities such as a county to come up with a regulatory structure. When you look at a structure, you need to look at the balance in your region. What's happening in Roseville? What's happening in Yuba? What just happened in Nevada County? Where there was a proposition to come more to where you're at, and it was rejected by 70% of the voters, with an 85% turnout in Nevada County, the highest in the state. So the people in this region are speaking with the same consistent voice, and if you look across the state, in the last two election cycles, the people have all voted for more stringent rules, tighter regulations, closing off the route of diversion, and let's not mince words, that diversion ends up in the inner cities, and greatly impacts people of color, especially children, children who are in poverty and are already behind the ball on getting a good education. And do we want them dropping IQ points before they even get to college? I think not. With regard to the inevitability of 2016, I would ask you to look back at 2012, we're seeing the same pattern emerge. We are likely to be looking at five, perhaps six initiatives trying to qualify. There is not a clear voice within the community, and one thing I haven't heard from anyone is how is this community going to do its share to reduce its water consumption? Many counties are mandated 36% less water usage. I've heard nothing on how the industry, or these growers, are going to do their share. So you have all of the, that's their industry, we're talking about this issue. So, you have the choice, come in to balance with your region, or become a magnet for just the profiteering carpet-bagging type pot growers. We support the rights under 215 under a reasonable structure, not based on the science of an anecdote, but based on real science, and the studies, like the epilepsy studies, were done in Denver, the GW Pharmaceutical studies. Look at this issue, there is a balance to be had, and if you feel it has to be an outdoor ban, it's working in many areas, because it makes it easy for enforcement. And if you have any questions, or would like some more specific scientific reports, I'll leave some cards with the clerk.
Yeah, please make sure the court, the board has it.
Chairman, can I, can I ask for clarification before Mr. Vacy leaves? I'm sorry, I'm a little unclear as to where your position is on this. Are you in support of regulation to allow grows under 215?
215 is the law of the land, we can't change that, however, it does allow great latitude to municipalities, counties, and cities to craft what is proper for their environment. But what I'm putting out to you is that I would submit that a huge majority of what's being grown in these giant grows is not going to medical, it's not going to patients, it's going to the inner cities where it's more profitable.
So, again, and that means you don't benefit here, the product is taken elsewhere and sold and resold. Please, everyone, understood, what I'm trying to get at is, are you in support, potentially, of the county developing recommendations for regulation?
Yes, we believe that their option one or two could come into play, but you absolutely need some regulation in this county, because you're the outlier now. Everybody around you has addressed this issue, in El Dorado's, Nevada counties looking at it, Yuba's done it, your biggest cities have done it, so all of a sudden, you're going to be the target. And the environmental degradation, and we hear what Normal says, we hear what the ASA say, but the profiteers don't listen. They're going to use the pesticides that are banned, they're going to use the poisons that kill the protected species.
So it sounds like you would be in support of carefully crafted regulation?
Ladies and gentlemen, the, there's a reason we have time at the microphone. Please keep your comments to yourself unless you're at the microphone, and be respectful of the speakers that have waited their turn. Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So it sounds like you would be supportive then, because 215 is the law of the land of some carefully crafted regulation?
Yes, and I would point to Butte County that just came in, in January, who severely curtailed their outdoor grows, their maximum grow for a collective is 150 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Duran, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I kind of want to cut to the chase here, and I'm just going to make this statement, I, I haven't heard anything that leads me to believe that an outdoor ban is the, is what we need to do here. What I would, please, 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 and, and I'm not picking sides here, you know, I'm, many of you might know, I am an attorney, I have read up on this, but I do think at the end of the day, depending on what the outcome is in 2016, if something does get on the ballot, that we would need to take into consideration some type of sideboards on this. I was particularly moved by the couple that came up and were talking about fence lines, and I, I do think that that's a perfectly reasonable request to locate it in an area on property, if possible, that would assist with those kinds of issues, but I haven't really heard anything lately in this discussion, or in the board report, that leads me to believe that an outdoor ban is warranted. The one thing that I really am concerned about is, is someone coming up and saying, well, let's point to this, and let's do that, let's do what that county did, without knowing what the effect on that county is, and we have no data whatsoever to support that, you know, to support that. The property values issue, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any one scintilla of evidence to show that, that property values are being affected, or potentially affected. So what I would propose is that we would move forward towards 2016, lay off this right now, get up to speed education-wise with our growers, with the sheriff's office, with, with the experts, and then at that point in time in the future, if it does become legal for anybody to do it on a recreational basis, I think that's the time that we would have to take this up, because I certainly don't feel that I have all of the 100% knowledge to just say, no, we're not going to do an outdoor grow, we're going to do an indoor-outdoor grow, we don't know what the effect is regulatory-wise on police and, and fire and sheriff, in these other counties that have gone into, you know, regulatory schemes. So I think we really need, really do need to do some more homework, and as the, as the people that stood up that are in kind of an awkward situation, this is a property rights issue, and Placer County is known for being very upfront and protecting the rights of all citizens, and I think that's an important piece. So that's what I would propose that we do, in order to, to move this issue forward, and that's, that's my recommendation.
So, just to be clear, we are still in public comment. If Supervisor Duran is making a motion to end public comment and provide direction, I'd like to hear it Supervisor Duran in the form of a motion. If however, you're, you're simply stating your opinion at this point, that's fine, and we'd...
No, I, I would, I think I've, I've, I've heard enough, I've read enough, at this point in time, to just say, look, I'm not convinced that there is a true issue at the moment. I certainly have taken my own polls of the folks in my jurisdiction, and it's not happening there, but I am making a motion to, to cut off public comment and take this up.
Excuse me, if the, excuse me, sir. It is, excuse me, sir, if a motion is made, the chair has to entertain the motion and wait to see if there's a second. Any member of this board can make a motion at any time to end public comment, if this were a notice public hearing, that discretion falls solely to the chairman, this is not a notice public hearing, we're simply allowing for public comment at this time. There's a motion by Supervisor Duran, if I understand it, to end public comment and to direct that the county not take any action regulating outdoor grows at this time, is that your motion Supervisor Duran?
Yes, it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Durham.
If, if we could, if we could, please, under...
I have a comment.
If we could, please, under discussion, the second of the motion wishes to add comment, so Supervisor Holmes.
I agree with Supervisor Duran said, but, you know, and another issue is that I don't want to spend, I'm sorry, I don't want to spend any additional staff time or county resources on this issue until the ballot initiative and the state legislature acts. There's no sense of us moving forward, if we have to come back and change whatever regulations we impose, if the state comes up with something different. So that's basically why I would rather take a wait-and-see action. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery, your light was on next.
Yes, thank you, I'm largely in agreement with Supervisor Duran and Supervisor Holmes on this. The one piece that I do have concerns about is, is water usage, and while marijuana is not a particularly thirsty plant compared to other crops in California, I do think we all have an obligation to try to figure out an approach that's going to conserve water as best as humanly possible. I have had concerns expressed to me from folks up the hill, where we have a fractured rock system, we don't have aquifers, very, very hard to monitor how much water is actually being taken out of that system, so I do have some concerns about that, that I'm concerned are not going to be addressed within the state legislation, whatever moves forward. So I would just like to say now that when we do come back after whatever state action occurs, we do have a discussion about how we manage water use, because I think it's going to be critical for all of us.
Supervisor Wigan, you have something you'd like to add at this point?
Yes, I very much would like to, thank you Kirk. So, a couple of comments I want to make, I'm going to vote against the motion, and I want to explain why, and I want everybody in the community to understand that, and my colleagues, that I'm certain regardless of...
Excuse me one sec, folks, if we could just kind of keep the hum down for a moment, thank you, appreciate it, go ahead. Go ahead Supervisor Wigan, I'm sorry.
Thanks. We're going to be dealing with this issue one way or the other, so we can wait now or wait later, but we all know how long it takes to resolve some of these issues sometimes... or wait later, but we all know how long it takes to resolve some of these issues sometimes, and so I think waiting until the state does something is a mistake at this particular point in time, and I'll try to explain that. So, first of all, for the benefit of everybody, staff came forward today seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors. Staff did not come forward today with a recommendation that we do anything in particular, they wanted to take our temperature and see what three of us thought, and I think we've got a good feel for what that is. I specifically want everyone to understand that I am not proposing that we put in place a ban of any consequence, but as has been alluded to, as it relates to private property rights being respected very intensely here in Plaster County, that includes local court enforcement that make sure that we don't provide for incompatible uses. I represent Sheridan, we've made some huge progress in improving situations there and setting the stage for even more promise of improvement in the future. I've taken the time to fly over our county and look at the grows, I've walked through the community of Sheridan at peak pre-harvest season, I've smelled the impact of the plants, I know for a fact that intense growth in an urban setting is an incompatible land use, just like, as has been alluded to earlier today, raising turkeys would be in an urban setting. So, I think it's...
Excuse me. Go ahead Supervisor Wiegand.
So, as has been alluded to, and really actually discussed by many of the people who here, I think, who are certainly opponents to a ban and proponents of marijuana growth and culturization, and potentially increased liberalization of its use, that's not what we're here about today. In Plaster County, we, for example, have zoning text that if you're in a fairly dense setting and raising livestock, you actually have to raise that livestock closer to your home than you do to others. Clearly, intense use in an urban setting, as far as I'm concerned, is not acceptable, it does diminish property values, it gives the county no tools by which to resolve those issues, and one way or the other, I'm sure, whether it's today or two years from now, we're going to be in that business, because I think this issue is going to get more intense. So, what I would appeal to my colleagues to vote against this particular motion, have us continue work, which would include receiving input, educating ourselves more, so that we can be prepared as this landscape changes, because clearly this is an emerging issue, and it's one that already is having a significant and adverse impact on a portion of the supervisory district that I'm privileged to represent. Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery, your light is still on, did you have something else?
Yes, I just want to let Supervisor Wiegand know that I understand and I recognize the specific concerns he raises about densely populated areas, and I liken that piece of the discussion a little bit to the conversation we had a number of years ago about backyard hens. Obviously, it's very different, hens versus marijuana cultivation, but when we did take it on, and I do think taking a wait-and-see to what the state does is the right direction here, we will at some point need to put some regulation into place about this, but it's going to need to be based upon whatever that new state law is going to be. What we did with the hens, I think, would address the issues that Supervisor Wiegand raises, we said, "They got to be closer to your house than your neighbor's house, you can only have a certain number of them." And, you know, there was a lot of concern that we were going to see hens roaming the streets, and it was going to be terrible. It didn't end up being terrible. So, I think when the time comes, this board is absolutely capable of making good judgments about how we do enforce, so that we protect everybody's private property rights. That's really critically important to all of us, so just really wanted to put that piece in there.
Yeah, and if I may, Chairman, yeah, just to clarify, what I'm not saying is that we do nothing, what I'm saying is that we get more educated about what to do, and maybe something isn't on in 2016, and maybe that's the time that we've got enough data and enough understanding, we've worked with the growers, we've worked with, you know, whoever else we need to work with, with law enforcement, and at that time, we put something on that's reasonable, that addresses these particular concerns. That's what I want to convey to Supervisor Wiegand, that, you know, this isn't a drop and, you know, we're going to kick the can down the road, we want to get that education, we want to get more knowledgeable about this particular issue. Plus, we also have, and as we've already heard, we've already got overloaded court enforcement. So, you know, that's another thing that we have to address as Board of Supervisors, how do we deal with that once this... If a regulation goes on is put in place. So, that being said, I would call the motion.
Okay. Supervisor Wiegand, was there anything else you...
Yeah, just to be clear again, my opposition to this motion is that indicates that we're not going to spend any county resources in continuing to go through that process. I personally will try to do that, but there will be three of us that more formally give that direction to the county exec's office. So, any effort that may emerge that would allow us, as a majority of the board, to gather research as to the kinds of concerns that I think have been expressed, that'd be something that I'd very much have an appetite to consider, and I'd look to all of you to help with that, and maybe we could give some more concise direction to county exec's office for that purpose.
And I don't have a problem including that in the direction to staff and the county executives' office, to continue to move this forward with the knowledge that we can acquire to really tailor-fit any regulation that comes here, and again, with all folks participating at the table.
Okay, thank you very much. You have a motion on the floor to end public discussion and essentially take no action, so option three, but providing direction to staff to continue to work with supervisors on concerns as they may regard individual districts. Will the court please call the rule?
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yuler?
No. Okay, motion passes, thank you all very much. Yeah, if you want to have a conversation with somebody, go ahead. The board is going to adjourn for just a couple of minutes, we'll reconvene at 11:20. And call back to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for May 5th. Appreciate everybody hanging with us. Ken, before I have you step up, I did promise the gentleman in the back the opportunity to address the board back under public comment, and he patiently waited throughout the last testimony, and so I want to give him the opportunity to step forward at this time and address the board. After this gentleman is done, was there anybody else that wanted to address the board under our extended public comment from this morning?
Yes.
There's one other person, perfect, thank you very much. All right, go ahead, sir.
Gary Mappa, a little anticlimactic.
Gary, you are never anticlimactic.
That's right.
The unfortunate situation is, I always try to show up earlier on time, and I always try to be the last... It's going to be a long day, and all the people I paid to be here to witness me, they're already gone, and I'm not going to get my money back. Address Applegate, California, once again Gary Mappa, and it's regarding Costco and D-Wind. Costco's probably maybe a foreign subject to a lot of people, so I'm going to just bring back a little history from an article that was published in the Journal, and because I'm old and don't use medicinal drugs, I can't see. Proposed Auburn Costco Terms Under Review, March 7, 2014. Auburn, California, the Plaster County Board of Supervisors will review key financial terms Tuesday for prospective ground lease agreement with Costco Wholesale Corp. that include a company contribution to help the multipurpose senior center relocate. And I'm going to skip some of the article because it's boring, I'm just going to go to the little highlights I pulled out. pulled out. Development of Costco store would affect the senior center and nine private sector tenants who lease county-owned buildings at the government center. In June 2013, county staff notified tenants of the proposed Costco project and the likelihood that their leases or occupancies would be not be extended beyond early 2015. The key financial terms include a Costco commitment to contribute up to $530,000 to cover senior center lease payments and tenant improvement costs at a new site. The county and Costco also agree to help the senior center find a suitable location and assist in negotiating lease terms. The senior center board is very grateful for the efforts of Placer County staff and management in helping us move the center forward into a new location, said President Eric Hill of the Senior Centers Board of Directors. This will eventually allow us to have a self-sustaining business model that does not rely on county assistance. Through the efforts of the county and the generosity of Costco, we should be able to move in this direction. We are very encouraged and grateful for all who are helping us in this matter. Placer County recognizes the importance of the senior center and its services to the community. We are working hard to keep the seniors, help the senior center find a new home, and are pleased with Costco's willingness to join that effort, County Executive Officer David Bosch said. Change is inevitable because the original buildings are more than 70 years old and beyond their useful lives. The proposed Costco project gives us an opportunity in continue economic development at the government center and bring to the Auburn area a highly desirable business that will create jobs in the local community. In a report to the board, county staff notes that the county is working with other tenants affected by the project to assist their transition from the government center. These efforts include providing advanced notice, the timelines, outreach to real estate professionals in the area, waiver of last month rent to assist with moving costs, and flexibility and more dates. The Board of Supervisors' consideration of the agreements with Conkey and Costco was another step in the transformation of the government center, and if approved, the project will bring together valued retailer to bring another valued retailer to the Auburn area. As the proposed Costco project proceeds through the review process, the public will have opportunities to comment on the lease agreement, the environment, environmental review report, and project candidates. And now I'm gonna flash forward to now. I'll go as fast as I can. The Costco project has pulled out, and we are in its rearview mirror. Rumor has it the Costco interest may be coming back. Other rumors include, from a reliable source, once Costco pulls out, it doesn't come back. The Costco project is no longer proceeding through the review process. It's time for Placer County to put a tourniquet on the remaining bloodletting at DeWitt. At issue, we have unanswered disposition of the senior center and the $530,000. We have a proposed relocated O'Brien Child Development Center, now subject to uncertainty due to location with the airport flight zones. We have successfully evicted or continue to evict the following: Genie Gamboa, DBA All-in-One Upholstery, Placer Union High School District Independent Living Program, Seniors First, Sierra Economic Development Corporation, Motherlode Special Olympics, Auburn Area Christmas Basket and Toys for Tots Program, Placer Union High School District Adult School, Andrea T. Hoffman, DBA Blattler's Fine Foods and Desserts, now out of business, Michael A. Coder and Lee L. Coder, DBA Music and More Arts Academy, disposition is unresolved. I've only got two more paragraphs for these people to hear, and I'm outta here. Okay. Hey, I have a vested interest in giving you all the time for the marijuana medicinal area. And lastly, 49 Fitness, Inc., DBA Courthouse Athletic Club, disposition unresolved. In a recent conversation with ownership, it was stated that making the June 30 eviction date was problematic. At risk is the business, its 50-plus employees, and a transition to normalcy. It's time for the county to put the brakes on regarding all activities pertaining to the DeWitt campus, especially those activities associated with the formal Costco site. It is essential that DeWitt's legacy be the subject of discussion as an agenda item sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
I'm done. I'm sorry I took up your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ma'am?
Ramona Brockman, 4060 Ridge Drive, Loomis, California. And I wanted to address the supervisors regarding the Loomis Library. And I wanted to thank the supervisors, and especially Supervisor Duran's motion, for delaying the vote to close the Loomis Library at the last meeting. Since then, the Friends of the Library has been working on our business as usual, as well as working with the Town of Loomis, Chamber of Commerce, and Loomis News to start connecting with our local businesses, schools, and residents to develop a plan to keep the library open. The Town and Loomis community are serious about keeping our library fully functional and open. Thus, I'm requesting that the supervisors honor the letter from the Mayor of Loomis requesting that a one-year extension of operations by adding it to your next agenda as an action item. And we would request that you approve a vote for a one-year extension for the Loomis Library. Thank you.
Thank you. And sir, did you step up because you wanted to address the board? Go ahead, please. And is there anybody else that wants to address the board under the public comment that we started at 8:30 this morning? No? Okay. Sir, go ahead.
William Waters, resident of Placer County since 1949, and former ARD Board member. I'd just like to state that I really think for the recreational and educational possibilities that you should extend the leases for those still at DeWitt. I have no problem with a Costco, but I'm concerned about those resources, although I understand the declining building thing because I'm a contractor. But they exist, and we don't have replacements for them now. And then if you do have to renegotiate with something with another entity, or even Costco, then maybe they can really step up in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I would just encourage folks, we, staff has done a marvelous job of making sure that our board agendas are available now a full week in advance of our Board of Supervisors meeting. Please be cognizant of our start times as they do fluctuate to accommodate the items that are on the agenda. And so in the future, just be aware that sometimes we'll start at eight, sometimes we'll start at 8:30. We're done with public comment for now. Just encourage you in the future to please be aware of that. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on with our next item, which is also a timed item, and that is a Public Works Status Update, Three Regional Transportation Projects Within Placer County. And Ken Grimm will introduce it, just long enough to throw it to Celia and her staff, I'm sure.
Exactly. Good morning, Chairman and Board Members. My name's Ken Grimm, Department of Public Works. Many transportation initiatives are going on right now in the county, many of those being led by the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Today, we have Celia McAdams and Luke McNeil-Caird to tell us about some of those and provide you some information about all the happenings within the county, so.
Good morning, Chair Ulller, members of the board. I apologize for my voice, but I think I can power through this. I'm Celia McAdam, Executive Director of the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and we're here to talk to you a little bit about what's, what we've got going on. Little bit of background, this slide shows you, and the public, some of the incredible amount of work we've gotten done in the South Placer County area since 1985, including the original Roseville Bypass, and the original 8065 Interchange, and more recently, the I-80 Bottleneck Project and the Lincoln Bypass. And we've leveraged a lot of discretionary dollars to make those happen. Placer County has been very successful in attracting those dollars because we have some great projects, and we've put some, some local dollars forth to do those. And of course, we still have a whole lot that we need to do in that same area. Some of these projects are funded, most have little more than seed money to move forward. But just because we don't know where all the money's coming from doesn't mean that we don't go ahead full charge. And so we've got some great partners assembled that are committed to finding a way to implement the projects we're gonna talk about this morning. And I'll throw it over to Luke McNeil-Caird, who's the project manager on these projects, to tell you the details.
Good morning. I'm actually gonna be walking through three of the regional transportation projects that we're currently working on at PCTPA. And that actually includes the I-80 auxiliary lanes. And just to clarify, an auxiliary lane is when you enter at an on-ramp, and then you're in your own lane, and you exit at the next off-ramp. That's an auxiliary lane. Then we have the widening of State Route 65 and the Interstate 80 State Route 65 interchange. And I do want to make mention of another project, Placer Parkway. That's the proposed 14.2-mile-long freeway between State Route 65 and State Route 99. And Placer County is actually taking the lead on the first segment from State Route 65 to Foothills Boulevard. And the city of Rockland just broke ground on the Whitney Ranch Parkway, and that will be the beginning point of Placer Parkway. So the first project up is the Interstate 80 Auxiliary Lanes Project. This is actually a photo looking west on Interstate 80 from the Douglas Boulevard over crossing. And of course, we have congestion on Interstate 80 in that area. There are actually two locations as part of this project. Location 1 is in the city of Rockland, and it goes from State Route 65 up to Rockland Road on eastbound Interstate 80. And then location 2 is westbound Interstate 80 in the city of Roseville, and that goes from Douglas Boulevard down to Riverside Avenue. For the eastbound location, from State Route 65 up to Rockland Road, what we're proposing to do there is add a fourth lane. So when you come southbound on State Route 65 and head towards Auburn, there'll be a lane that goes all the way up to Rockland Road, and then we'll widen the Rockland Road off-ramp to two lanes. And we actually have a community meeting coming up on Thursday night in the city of Rockland for this location. For the westbound direction, as you travel from State Route 65 down to Douglas Boulevard, you have five lanes. And then when you get to Douglas Boulevard, it narrows down to four lanes. So what we're proposing there is to add a fifth lane all the way from Douglas Boulevard down to Riverside Avenue. So we'll have five continuous lanes from State Route 65 all the way down to the Capital City Freeway. And last night, we had a focused community meeting in the city of Roseville for that location. Second project I'm gonna cover is the widening of State Route 65, and this is actually seven miles of State Route 65 from just north of Galleria Boulevard, Stanford Ranch Road, all the way up to Lincoln Boulevard. And if you've traveled on southbound State Route 65 recently, from 6:00 a.m. in the morning to 7:00 p.m. at night, it's experiencing congestion, and even on the weekends. So with this project, what ultimately we'll have here is widening of State Route 65 all the way from Interstate 80 up to Blue Oaks Boulevard. We're gonna add a third general-purpose lane, northbound and southbound. And then as a future phase, we're gonna widen State Route 65 all the way to the city of Lincoln. And then the third project, the Interstate 80 State Route 65 Interchange, and this is actually the highest priority of the PCTPA Board in terms of regional transportation projects. And our board represents not only Placer County, but the other six local jurisdictions in Placer County. And this is actually a photo looking from Roseville Parkway over crossing eastbound on Interstate 80 towards State Route 65. And today, traffic is backing up one mile from State Route 65 to Eureka Road. And within six years, we anticipate it will back up over three miles to pass Douglas Boulevard. So there's actually a fairly large study area that we're looking at with the interchange. It actually extends on Interstate 80 all the way from Douglas Boulevard up to Rockland Road, and then on State Route 65 from Interstate 80 up to Pleasant Grove Boulevard. And we're currently working on the environmental document. And typically, projects of this size take about 16 years from start to finish. So this is a very large regional project. So we actually began in 2010 on this environmental process, and what I'm gonna focus on today is Alternative 2, our Collector-Distributor System ramps. We actually have three build alternatives, but Caltrans, Federal Highway Administration, and our four local agencies, Placer County, City of Lincoln, City of Rockland, and City of Roseville, have all agreed that Alternative 2, from an agency standpoint, is the preferred alternative. And when we circulate the environmental document, we will call this out as our preferred alternative, subject to public review. So the Collector-Distributor System ramps, this is where we're gonna build a barrier-separated roadway parallel to Interstate 80 eastbound. And that's actually shown in the red here. And I actually have a traffic simulation here of what this Collector-Distributor System ramps will look like in year 2040. And we're starting here at the Atlantic Street-Eureka Road interchange, and we're gonna be moving along eastbound Interstate 80. And you can see the Collector-Distributor roadway that parallels Interstate 80 there. Again, that will be barrier separated. And then as we approach State Route 65, currently, there's a loop ramp from eastbound Interstate 80 to northbound State Route 65. We are gonna remove that and build a three-lane direct connect flyover from eastbound Interstate 80 to northbound State Route 65. And then these improvements will actually carry all the way up to Pleasant Grove Boulevard. With Alternative 2, we're not only going to reduce existing congestion and improve safety, but we'll be able to accommodate the planned growth in South Placer County with this interchange, as I mentioned, through year 2040. So I also mentioned that we've been working at this since 2010. We've had five stakeholder meetings and three community workshops. We've also had quite an online presence with our website, www.8065interchange.org. We have several newsletters that go out per year, and we officially kicked off the environmental document in 2013, and we're about to release the draft environmental document. But before we do that, we wanted to come to Placer County this morning, and we've already previously gone to the city of Roseville and the city of Rockland to do an informational update. And then we plan to release the draft environmental document in June, and we'll have a 45-day review period. And we'll actually be back here, this is where the PCTPA Board meeting meets, right here at the domes in Auburn, to solicit a public comment. And then the final environmental document, we anticipate in the summer of 2016. So you may be asking yourself, why does it take a year to get from the draft environmental document to the final environmental document? And the reason is, we have seven ongoing environmental issues that we need to deal with over the next year, and we need to coordinate with several regulatory agencies. But if you can take away one thing from all these updates, I hope it's construction. That's why we're doing all these environmental documents, is so we can actually construct something. And if you travel on eastbound Interstate 80 today, there's a two-lane off-ramp, the loop off from eastbound Interstate 80 to northbound State Route 65. And then we have the one-lane off-ramp from westbound Interstate 80 to northbound State Route 65. So we have three lanes coming in and narrowing down to two lanes. The first phase of the 8065 interchange, we wanna widen northbound State Route 65 to three lanes from Interstate 80 up to Galleria Boulevard-Stanford Ranch Road. And we've actually partnered with the Highway 65 JPA to also improve the northbound ramps at Galleria Boulevard-Stanford Ranch Road, and that will actually mirror the southbound ramps. And even with this first phase, we still need funding, and Celia's gonna talk more about that.
Yeah. Unfortunately, my, my part of the presentation is the reality check, that it really is all about money. We have some great plans, you heard about those, and we really wanna implement them. That's, that's something that my board has laser-focused on. But the, the problem is, we don't have the money. The state and federal gas tax, most people think that pays for transportation, and that was probably true, maybe 30 years ago. But what has happened in the intervening years, since those were last raised in the early 90s, is the buying power of those gas taxes is about two-thirds less than what it was when they were passed in the early 90s. And that translates to about half of what it costs just to maintain the highway and road system with no money for the capacity increases that we're looking at here. And you compound that with, you know, the federal Highway Administration, or, excuse me, the Highway Trust Fund is essentially going bankrupt. They've had to transfer money from the general fund to make that solvent for the last, for many years, and that doesn't look like that's going to change. And on the state side, what money there is, is clearly focused on things that are not capacity increasing. I think it's safe to say that the, the current administration at the state is not interested in the kind of projects that Placer has as our highest priorities. So we look at things like developer impact fees. Well, I think the, the board Well, I think the board here is well aware that we've really gone to the mat in terms of imposing developer impact fees, and those are really maxed out and can only be addressing existing problems, not the, or, excuse me, they can't pay for existing problems. They have to pay only for the impacts of those developments. So what we've been looking at for a number of years is the possibility of a transportation sales tax. Most of the urban counties around the state, in fact, all the urban counties around the state, approximately 20 counties representing something like 85% of the population, have these kinds of sales taxes devoted to transportation. And in the last 30 years, have put about two-thirds of the dollars that go into the transportation system have come from local option sales taxes. So, you know, the reality is, is that without some new money, we can't build the infrastructure that we need to support economic development and the quality of life that attracts people to Placer County and keeps them here. So in working with the community and, you know, a large net of people trying to figure out how we bridge the gap between what we need and what we have, is some of the suggestions that are up on the screen here. You know, obviously, keep the money we've got, that's kind of an obvious one. And also, keeping that leveraging of state and federal dollars that we've been so successful at, keeping the momentum going. Well, in order to keep the momentum going, you have to have your own skin in the game, and that means local dollars. We have those additional developer impact fees, those are going to a number of the projects. You heard about the Placer Parkway as a large developer fee associated with it. The Highway 65 widening has as well, a number of other projects. We've looked at high occupancy toll lanes, which is essentially allowing single occupant vehicles to buy their way into carpool lanes. And in studying that, we found out it would cost more to administer the program than it would in generating dollars. So that's not a good idea, to lose money. Don't want to go in the opposite direction there. We've also looked at the Placer Parkway as a toll facility. Again, you end up with the same problem because you can't attract the private investment. It doesn't generate enough profit, enough revenue for the private investment to jump in on that. So it really comes down to the bottom of the barrel, if you will, in terms of our options. And in the recommendation of our steering committee that said you need to look at a transportation sales tax, which requires a two-thirds majority at an election, which is a high bar, particularly in a conservative county like Placer, we are looking at a half percent over 30 years to plug the gap in the dollars that we need. So the board said, okay. My board, the PCTPA Board, said, go out and talk to people and start the conversation on what we need to do to meet our transportation needs for the future. And that's what we're doing here today, as well as out in the community. Ultimately, a decision will be made in about a year as to whether something will go on the ballot for the 2016 ballot. And so we would be coming back to the Board of Supervisors for that discussion. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any board members have any questions? Cecilia, I see Supervisor Wiegand has his light on.
Cecilia, have you done any analysis as to the taxes collected in Placer County being sent to Sacramento and Washington, D.C. as compared to what we get back, specific for transportation improvements?
Well, I can tell you specifically, California is what they call a donor state. We do not get back what we send.
Well, and it's not too difficult, too expensive. We might want to do that actually specific to the county. I knew the California issue, but county, of course, just participated in cap to cap. And before that, some of us were there doing our local advocacy work. And I can tell you that Supervisor Euler and I had a particularly interesting conversation with one of our congresspeople, and I'll share that more with you later. But I think that argument is something that could resonate more, not only with folks who live here, but also with our congressional delegation. Then additionally, as you go forward, are you, you mentioned you made presentations to Rockland and Roseville, what about Lincoln? Are you scheduled there?
No, we are not. We offered, but they didn't take us up on the offer.
Okay, thanks. And then Macs, are you willing to get out to the MAC meetings?
It's funny, just this morning, I asked my assistant to start scheduling us to go out to the MACs. So we're going to be doing that roadshow in the next couple of months.
Thanks.
Any other board member have any comments on the presentation we've received? Seeing no lights, any member of the public want to address the board on this item? Yes, ma'am, come on forward.
Ramona Brockman, 4060 Ridge Drive, Lumis, California. I just wanted to have a couple of comments that I would state that I'm not in favor of adding more lanes. Many transportation studies have been done that show that adding lanes does never, does not ever alleviate congestion. It encourages land development nearby, and it only takes a few years for it to become congested again. A great case in point is the addition and the widening of the I-80 around Douglas Boulevard. It's back to being congested again. It's just a pointless thing to do, and that is a very well-known thing in the planning community, that adding lanes doesn't decrease your congestion problem, it makes it worse. And as you, as the presentation also noted, that this is a funding and a money problem. As you all know, building infrastructure highways is expensive, and it's unsustainable. It has become extremely unsustainable as our urban sprawl keeps growing and going. There are no funds left to repair and build our highways. It's just an equation that doesn't work. And lastly, it's a question for the future of Placer County. We are known to be a very popular county, as was mentioned earlier, that we're one of the, you know, voted one of the nicer places in the country to live. And it's a question I have for you, what kind of county do you want? If you keep adding highways and lanes in, you're going to start becoming, looking like LA and the Bay Area. But at least, those places have good public transportation put in place. There's Muni. We don't have much of that in this county, or even down into the Sacramento area. You know, planning highways is not the future. It is definitely not in our best interest, especially since Placer County is a non-attainment area for meeting federal air quality standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item?
Michael Garbedian, I live in Lumis. The last speaker was so inspirational, I hadn't planned to say anything. When they went out earlier, I got brought in some reading material about this, hoping for an opportunity just to stay for this item. I have two kind of questions. You mentioned, at the bottom of one slide, there was a legislative option. I wonder if you could explain what the legislative options might be? And in terms of developer fees, could you explain what the limits are on that, either legally, or politically, or otherwise?
Sure, if you just, yeah, go ahead and address your comments to the board, and then after we're done with public comment, we'll circle back with staff. Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, Cecilia, any additional explanation for the legislative component? And then perhaps a brief discussion of the nexus requirement associated with how we set our building fees, our impact fees?
I will be very brief. In terms of the legislative options, the Board of PCTPA has been very clear about trying to remove some of the roadblocks and the silos that go along with what existing transportation dollars there are. A lot of these funding programs have specific types of projects that you can use the money for in certain circumstances that don't always work very well for Placer County's needs. And so as you remove some of those silos and give more local control to that funds, it allows us to address the needs that we have here. Quite honestly, if anything, the laws seem to be going the opposite way, to add more constraints on the dollars that are there. And so we end up being more in a defensive position in trying to keep what few dollars we have from state and federal regulation. So that's an ongoing challenge. In terms of developer impact fees, I believe it's AB 1600 requires a nexus study to be done between developer impact fees and the improvements that they fund. And so that cannot go to things like road maintenance. It has to be the impacts of that new development. I can tell you that PCTPA itself administers two different impact fees, one of which is a $485 million program, which is a very high-dollar impact fee program in the context of development. And then another one, known as the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, that is a $191 million program. And those fees run from a couple of hundred dollars to, I think, the highest fee in any of those programs is something over $7,000 per development unit equivalent. So ultimately, those fees are passed on to the businesses and the residents that are using those new development units. And so that's the kind of push and pull in terms of those improvements.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Somehow, I got appointed to the California Council of Governments, and I've been to three meetings, which are statewide organizations. And what we've found is the counties that do have the transportation sales tax have more ability to leverage state and federal dollars, and they actually get projects done. The PCTPA staff, led by Cecilia, has done a tremendous job in leveraging money through California Transportation Commission, the federal government, and Congressman Doolittle helped us with, back in the day, when there were earmarks. There's no more earmarks. Federal and state dollars are limited, and so it's up to us, as local control, to seek other ways to make transportation projects work. And so I want to thank you for your leadership. I know you've been out in the community, and I've been with you at several organizations where you've spoken, and we've gotten some good results. But it's all about explaining the problem and the funding strategy. So anyhow, thank you, and Luke, thank you as well.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other board comments, thank you, Cecilia and Ken for the presentation. Appreciate the update. All right. We have a number of department head items we need to get through today. We've concluded our timed items. We'll begin with Facility Services. This is a discussion regarding the Medivista Transfer Station improvements, Project 4903, construction award. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Chairman Euler. I'm Kevin Bell, Environmental Engineering Program Manager in Facility Services. I have Robin Mahoney with me this morning, he's going to talk briefly about the project.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'll make this quick for you. Today, we're here with three requested actions. One, award the bid for construction for the Medivista Transfer Station improvements project to All American Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $410,444. Approve a resolution authorizing Director of Facility Services, or designee, to execute the resulting contract, and any required change orders in an amount not to exceed $452,000. That includes approximate 10% contingency. And three, approve a budget revision canceling reserves in the Solid Waste Management Enterprise Fund in the amount of $100,000, and increase appropriations to this capital project to deal with additional state requirements. For a little background, Medivista Transfer Station was constructed approximately 30 years ago, and it provides solid waste disposal services to Medivista and surrounding communities. Medivista facility experiences some traffic congestion, some safety issues, and some deteriorated pavement. County staff designed the project to widen the entrance road, expand the turnaround area, increase the number of tipping bays, install tipping walls and fencing, and replace the existing guardrails. On September 23rd, year board of 2014, your board approved the plans and specs for this project and authorized staff to solicit bids. The project was advertised in accordance with the Public Contract Code. Bids were open on March 17th, 2015, here recently, and the apparent low bidder was All American Construction with the bid amount of $410,444. So with that, I'd open it up to entertain any questions you might have.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions for you. The staff report indicates that the cost difference between the 337.5 that we estimated and the 410.444 was based upon increases in steel material costs, which I understand, but also via addendum. Can you clarify for me what those addendum are?
Sure. We had to, we had to prepare a work plan for the Water Quality Control Board, who had imposed some additional work on the project that was unforeseen originally. So we're basically just dealing with additional state requirements in those addenda.
BMPs to prevent runoff and?
Not exactly. We're proposing some impacts to the landfill liner system that will need to be repaired, and they need a third-party oversight for those repairs and associated reporting.
Okay, that's great. That's very helpful, because it is a fairly substantial difference, and it's always useful for me to understand what the driver really is on that. Speaking of drivers, what is the, what's the timeframe, do we think, for this project? This is sort of a multi-part question. What's the timeframe? How much additional construction traffic do we expect to see on the road leading to the facility? And how do we plan on notifying the local residents about this, since they're very concerned about what happens at the end of that road generally?
Sure. Well, the project is scheduled to be completed this summer and fall. There's 120 working days for the project, however, the construction should be a lot shorter than that. The facility's open Friday through Monday, and most of the work will be completed Tuesday through Thursday. So as far as impact to the public using the facility, there should be very little. Let's see. And then as far as how are we going to notify the public of the work, we have some direct-mail outreach going out to the public, just to inform them of the schedule and the potential impacts to them.
Great. That is all fabulous. I'm so delighted to hear all of that. The one thing that I would suggest, I don't know if it's possible within the timeframe and within the contractual agreement, is maybe not having construction traffic on that road during school commute hours. Lot of kids on that road, and I just think there could be some heightened concern about those impacts. So if there is a possibility to tweak the hours a little bit, I know the community would appreciate it greatly. But thank you. Very good report, very comprehensive. I appreciate all your work on it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other supervisors have any other comments or questions on the item? And seeing none, any member of the public want to address the board on the item? All right, we'll bring her back. What's the board?
Move approval, turn my microphone on. Move approval of Department Item 6A, 1 through 3 inclusive.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes, as this is a budget revision, it will be a roll-call vote, please.
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
All right, thank you. All right, move on, Public Works, Contract 00912, roadway surface treatment for summer of 2015.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board.
Yes. Or good noon.
I know.
Dead up noon.
I know, I know. Kevin Tabor, manager for the Road Maintenance Division, Department of Public Works. Make this quickly, we're asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing the Chair to award and execute Contract Number 912, roadway surface treatment, summer 2015, to Telfer Highway Technologies in the amount of $1,709,824, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute contract change orders up to 15% of the contract amount. We opened bids early last month, we received five bids, Telfer was low. I'll point out, they were 25.7% under my estimate. This time last year, I was, they were, same low bidder, about 25% over my estimate. So we timed it right, got good oil prices. So because of those good low bids, we're asking for 15% instead of the normal 10%, so we can take advantage of that, of those low-bid unit prices. Other than that, the project's fully funded, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions by board members? My only question is, I'm used to traditionally seeing discretion for change orders at the 10%. Why? Why fifteen on this one?
We've got, Ken Graham, Department of Public Works.
Becky Regan was sitting there earlier.
Yeah.
We're having trouble hearing her, so.
We got extremely great bids this year. So the intent of going for fifteen percent is we want to extend the limits of our work, get as much money on the road as we can. So that fifteen percent is really to extend the limits of the resurfacing work.
Perfect. So you're not looking at it as what we're used to seeing, which is in case costs go over. What you're saying is, we have, if we have the opportunity to get more work done, and we can go ahead and spend the money and get it done.
Correct. Unlike most projects, the resurfacing typically doesn't have a lot of unknowns, because we're working on the top of the road. And so this is really about extending the amount of work.
That's great. Okay. Thank you very much. Any members of the public want to address the board on this item? What's the pleasure, the board?
Second.
Motion, Duran, second, Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much, and the second.
Thank you.
Public Works item.
Good morning, Chair, board members. Brian Stewart, Senior Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works, Tahoe Engineering Division. Good news, the King Beach Commercial Core Project, Phase One, Core the Core is going great. The contractor's attempting to turn this nearly three-season project into two seasons, and appears to be favorable in that light. To take advantage of this accelerated work, the Department of Public Works would like to be ready to begin Phase Two, what we're calling Gateway to the Core, should the contractor complete this season as he has planned. Therefore, as a mechanism, is needed to be in place to fund the project and move into Phase Two. The funding that is proposed includes applying for a state transportation improvement program, or STIP funds, under Assembly Bill thirty-ninety. In short, AB thirty-ninety structure requires California Transportation Commission approval, but allows the local government to advance the project using local dollars and being reimbursed over time. Staff recommends using the county-wide traffic impact fee program as a local funds to advance Gateway to the Core project. Currently, the fund has a balance of over thirty million, but nearly half of that is encumbered by current projects and near-future expenditures. It is estimated that Gateway to the Core will need seven-point-six million of the TIF, traffic impact fees. This will leave approximately eight-point-four in the county-wide traffic impact fee program that is not encumbered. The overall fund balance of the county-wide traffic impact fee program will continue to increase from fees collected and repayment of other advanced funds. Currently, Kings Beach, the commercial core, the core of the core, has five-million-dollar advancement from the county-wide traffic impact fee program. The first allotment of that repayment from the STIP funds will happen this year of just over a million dollars, with the payback in two more fiscal years after that being complete for that five million. The payback installment details will be ironed out in the final agreement, but it is proposed that the seven-point-six-million-dollar advance by the county traffic impact fee program would be entirely paid back by STIP in fiscal year nineteen and twenty. I must reiterate that Q and D's construction is doing fabulous in building Phase One, and a strategy to complete this fall. This would mean Phase Two could begin as early as spring two thousand sixteen. However, should the contractor need his full allotment of contract time, the project Gateway to the Core would be delayed until, well, into two thousand sixteen. So with that, the Department requests that your board adopt the resolution of the three actions posted, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, Brian, I want to say thank you. And Q and D has just been absolutely amazing on this. They were either slightly ahead of or exactly to schedule last summer, so I have great faith that they're going to be able to do the same this summer. I know the community is very much looking forward to creating that connectivity essentially from two-sixty-seven, tying into the Core project that we've been working on. I'm very supportive of this. If, you know, if my board or the public doesn't have any additional comments, I will be making a motion to approve.
Okay, any other board members have any comments? Seeing none, neither of our sheriff's deputies like to comment on this item?
Or Kevin?
No. No, Public Works doesn't get a comment, they already had their say. It's only, it's Public Works and the sheriff, that's it. You guys can argue over it. All right, pleasure, the board?
Move approval.
That was motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. There being no other business before the board, especially having to deal with marijuana grows, we are adjourned to our May nineteenth board meeting. Thank you all very much.